And they were not, a couple of small ones came, but they were not small dogs. They were large dogs and they seemed to really enjoy it a lot. So that's where we were and we had a ribbon cutting. So now we have, so I just wanted to let you know about that. If you want to go out to Valley West and check it out, if you have a dog, be sure to take it with you. And it's open all times of day and night. And you have to lift the little lift and then the gate opens. But it's sort of a, you're in a holding area. So your dog can't get out or other people's dogs can't get out either. So I wanted to do the land acknowledgement now. The city of Arcata acknowledges the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past, present, as well as future generations. And this acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy of narratives of settler colonialism. So would you please like to join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the US of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's this, there's this ridge down here. I stepped on it. Thank you. May we please have roll call?
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next is ceremonial matters. And the first item we have on the agenda is a proclamation recognition of Juneteenth, which is June 19th, 2025. And Councilmember White is going to read that.
Thank you. In recognition of June 19th, June 19th, 2025, whereas the city of Arcata recognizes June 19th, Juneteenth, as an important day in American history, marking the date in 1865, when the last enslaved African Americans in Galveston, Texas, were informed of their freedom more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. And whereas Juneteenth stands as a symbol of freedom, resilience, and the ongoing journey towards justice and equality for Black Americans. And whereas Black residents of Humboldt County have made and continue to make significant contributions to the cultural, educational, civic and economic life of our region, often in the face of historical and ongoing barriers, including underrepresentation and experiences of racial bias. And whereas acknowledging our shared history and the realities of past and present inequities is essential to building a more inclusive and thriving community for all. And whereas the city of Arcata supports continued efforts to ensure equitable access to opportunity for Black residents, including the pursuit of strategies that improve access to education, economic development, housing and land-based initiatives. And whereas Juneteenth is an opportunity not only to reflect on the struggle for freedom and civil rights, but also to celebrate the strength, creativity and leadership of Black communities throughout our region and nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes June 19th, 2025 as Juneteenth and encourages all residents to reflect on the meeting of this day, to learn from our collective history and to support efforts that advance equity, inclusion and opportunity for all, especially Black residents who have helped shape the fabric of our community dated June 18th, 2025, by our mayor Alex Stillman. And today it will be accepted by Lexi Reed and Rosemary Grady from Black Humboldt.
I was like, should we come on up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council, for acknowledging Juneteenth as a significant day of remembrance, resistance and resilience. We deeply appreciate this recognition and we also invite us all to remember that a proclamation is only just the beginning. Juneteenth is not just about marking the end of slavery. It's a call to action to dismantle the systems that continue to harm Black lives today. Here in Humboldt County, where Black residents make up just 2% of the population, the need for pro-Black initiatives is urgent. We cannot continue to build an inclusive community without first acknowledging how white supremacy continues to shape access to land, safety, economic opportunity and cultural representation. The emotional, mental and physical vulnerability that Black people carry in this region is not abstract. It is real and is local. One of the most pressing needs we hear from our community year after year is a call for safety and autonomy. That means having not only protection from harm, but also access to power. Power to gather, to build, to own and to thrive on our own terms. We must begin to move conversations about equity into tangible action. That starts with land. That starts with buildings and facilities dedicated to Black use. Black Humboldt is eight years old this year and it has yet to find suitable, affordable, accessible space to convene our team and community. This conversation starts with real reparative strategies, where reparations aren't some far-off idea, but a framework for returning resources to historically excluded communities, especially as we watch farms be abandoned and storefronts and city buildings stand empty.
This week, Black Humboldt will host our seventh annual Juneteenth Festival, running from Thursday, June 19th to Saturday, or Sunday, June 22nd, across Humboldt County with partners like the NAACP, the Moja Center, HC Black Music and Arts, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Central de Pablo and Pathways of Purpose. We are collectively taking the space to represent ourselves, our cultures and the intersection we hold with one another. Our day festival at Howson Park will take place on Saturday, June 21st, from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And we are looking for support in the form of hands and volunteers and monetary donations. This isn't just a celebration, it's education, economy and cultural restoration. We uplift Black joy, we celebrate Black revolution and we hold space for Black futures. Because Amer- American history includes moments we are not proud of, but our commitment to truth, healing and progress requires us to face those moments head-on. As we continue to work, we ask you to join us, not just in word, but in action. Keep learning, keep listening, keep adapting as leaders and above all, help us shape Humboldt where Black life is visible, valued and liberated. Thank you.
So I would like to say that our next proclamation is in celebration of 4th of July Jubilee, which is on July 4th, 2025. And so Councilmember Matthews is going to read that. Thank you.
So I'm going to break protocol and read this as the 4th of July Jubilee will be my last event with the Arcata Chamber. And I've just been so proud to serve this organization and proud to work with the board. So this is a proclamation in celebration of the 4th of July Jubilee, July 4th, 2025. Whereas the city of Arcata, known for its vibrant community spirit and commitment to fostering local businesses, recognizes the importance of celebrating our nation's independence and the contributions of our local commerce. And whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce has organized a grand event to commemorate the significant day with a festive celebration that brings together businesses, residents and visitors alike. And whereas the Jubilee promises to be a day filled with joy, camaraderie and entertainment, featuring activities, live music, local artisans and food vendors that highlight the diverse talents of our local community. And whereas this event not only provides an opportunity for our community members to come together and enjoy the festive atmosphere, but also acts as a catalyst for the growth and success of our local economy, creating a platform for businesses to showcase their offerings and gain exposure to a wider audience. And whereas the Jubilee is the longest-running event on the Arcata Plaza, dating back over 150 years. Therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Arcata encourages all residents to attend the Arcata Chamber of Commerce's 4th of July Jubilee on the Arcata Plaza on Friday, July 4th, 2025, dated June 18th, 2025. Signed by Mayor Stillman. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little choked up. And this is going to be accepted by our wonderful Board Secretary, Ashley Osh.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the city council and fellow community members, on behalf of the Arcata Chamber of Commerce, I am truly honored to accept this proclamation in celebration of the 4th of July Jubilee. This annual event is a cornerstone of our community, a vibrant testament to the spirit of Arcata and the resilience of our local businesses. As we gather to commemorate our nation's independence, we also celebrate the unique talents and contributions of our local artisans, food vendors and entertainers. The Jubilee is not just a day of festivities. It's a gathering where friendships are rekindled, smiles are exchanged and shared love for this beautiful city shines bright. For over 150 years, the 4th of July Jubilee has brought together residents and visitors alike, creating a sense of camaraderie that strengthens our community bond, that strengthens our community bonds. It serves as a vital platform for our local businesses to showcase their offerings, fostering economic growth and resilience within our beloved Arcata. As we look forward to this year's Jubilee, I invite each of you to join us on July 4th. Let's come together to celebrate not just our nation's independence, but also the spirit of community that makes Arcata so special. Thank you for your continued support and let's make this Jubilee a memorable one.
So we'll move on to our reports by commission and committees and we do not have any this evening. And we'll go on to staff reports. Our report shall be specifically limited to city business and shall not request or lead to actions by the council at this meeting. A, we're going to receive an update from the juvenile division counselor, Leah Valadilla regarding the Arcata Police Department's juvenile division program. Thank you.
Should I sit over there?
I think you're going to sit over, wouldn't she sit over here? Thank you.
Okay, now can you hear me? Okay. Okay. So my name is Leah Valdevia and I'm the juvenile diversion counselor for the Arcata Police Department. Tonight we'll be talking about the diversion program. This includes the purpose of the program and where the referrals for the program come from. I'll be talking a little bit about accountability counseling and restorative conferences. I'll go over brief interventions, the parenting classes that I teach, which include the Parent Project and Loving Solutions. I'll talk a little bit about my partnership with Teen Court and Case Management Services and my six-month plan. All right, so to begin, the purpose of the diversion program is to prevent youth involvement with the juvenile justice system. And as for my referrals, I get some from law enforcement, most especially Arcata Police Department. So that could be teens who are out of parental control. And sometimes I get referrals from schools for things like poor attendance, substance use on campus or fighting. And the reason why that's important is because those are risk factors that are associated with future criminal activity. Teens who are involved in that kind of activity are more likely to get involved with the justice system later on. So we want to intervene early and prevent that from happening. These are numbers related to the first quarter of 2025. So in the first quarter, I had a total of 28 open cases. Of those 28 cases, 15 were rolled over from the previous quarter. And of those 15 cases, five of them were law enforcement referrals, eight were school referrals and one was a referral from another source. And then there were 13 new cases in the first quarter. 11 of those were law enforcement and two were school referrals. So what you're looking at are the blue bars for law enforcement and the pink bars are the school referrals. So how do I intervene with some of this early criminal activity? One of the things is accountability counseling and restorative conferences. So with accountability counseling, I'm using a model that was developed by the Resolve Center for Dispute Resolution and Restorative Justice, which is an organization based in Medford, Oregon. And their model involves four sessions. They're intended to be class sessions, but I do them one-on-one. And so in the first meeting, what I do is talk about the types of harms. So that includes financial harm, emotional harm, physical harm and how crime affects people's time, which is a form of harm. And then the broader circle of who's affected. So that includes the victim themselves, anybody who went into the crime, sometimes people's support systems, both for the victim and the offender. Then we talk a little bit about thinking errors, which are the stories that people tell themselves to justify the reasons for their actions. And then we go over honest storytelling. So that's accountability and telling their story from an honest perspective and acknowledging the decisions they made. Then we take in the third session, the victim's perspective. One of the things I like to do is call up the person who was actually affected by the harm, by the action and ask them a series of questions. And then when I meet with the youth, I have them answer the same questions from that person's perspective. And a lot of the time they give me, I don't know, answers. And so after we go through those questions and I hear I don't know half a dozen times, I read them the actual answers from the person who was impacted. And sometimes you can really see a big, like a little shift in their thinking or just in their, as they take that information in, they start to understand like how they've actually affected another person. I really think that one's a much more impactful meeting than some of the others. And then the last session, we go over how much crime costs the community and choosing a crime-free life. And that, that involves going over, we read letters from inmates to their younger selves. And then I have the youth write a letter to their current selves from their future selves. And so in that letter, they're going over things that could be barriers to having a successful life and what they need to do to overcome those barriers. And then sometimes I do restorative conferences. So that involves an actual meeting between the person who caused harm and the person who was affected. That's a very scripted and facilitated conversation where everyone takes turns speaking and they answer very specific questions about how they were affected, what choices they made leading up to the activity, that kind of thing. And then we come up with kind of a contract to repair the harm that was done. So for example, earlier this year, there was a young person who broke a window at a local business and we had a conversation with the business owner. And it was a very, it was a very good productive conversation. And in the end, the young person agreed to do a few hours of community service for that business, which mostly involved like pulling weeds in front of business and doing some basic cleanup. And they actually came to that meeting with money to pay for the broken window. And that business owner said, I don't want that money. I want you to take that and put that toward the sport that you're interested in and invest that in yourself. And so that was another really nice meeting that we had. And so looking at the numbers for accountability counseling of the 28 open cases that I had open in the first quarter, 19 of them were not required to do accountability counseling at all because they were referred to me for a different reason. Seven participants completed accountability counseling before the first quarter. So those were my cases that had rolled over from the previous quarter. And two participants completed accountability counseling during the first quarter. Brief interventions is the substance use counseling program that I use. That's a model based off of, that was developed by SAMSA. It's inspired by motivational interviewing and it's two meetings where we look at the pros and cons of changing behavior versus staying the same. We talk about the person's desire to change and if they want to change, who can help them achieve their goal. It's not a program where we say drugs are bad and you have to stop. It's very much a harm reduction model. So we're talking about you're in control of your life. It's up to you if you want to make a change. And if you do, here's how you're going, here's how you can accomplish that goal. And they're coming up with those steps themselves. It's not me narrating to them how it will happen. So to look at those numbers, in the first quarter, I had a total of 17 people who went through the brief interventions program. And so seven of those people completed brief interventions prior to the first quarter. Those were my rollover cases. Nine people completed brief interventions during the first quarter. One person started it, but then moved away before they could finish. And 11 people were not required to complete brief interventions, either because they were not referred for substance use or they didn't, and/or they didn't mention it during their intake meeting with me. So it wasn't identified as a need. Parent Project and Loving Solutions are the parenting classes that I teach. They're very popular. I often get phone calls throughout the year, even when I'm not actively promoting the classes. They are 10-week parenting classes where we go over a range of topics which include and are not limited to daily love and affection, addressing problematic behavior, active supervision and structure, improving school attendance and performance and intervening in substance use and out-of-control behavior. One of the things that's really great about this class is that it gives parents who are struggling an opportunity to connect with other parents who are struggling and come to understand that they're not the only people who are having this problem and they're not alone. One of my personal favorite things about the parenting classes is that they set parents up with a long-term support network. So I will hear from parents a year after they've completed the class and they'll tell me that they're still talking to other people that they took the class with. Some of them are babysitting for each other or they're getting together at the park for playdates. And so that's just really important. You know, there are a lot of parents who are here without a natural support system. They don't have family in the area. They're feeling very isolated from their peers. And so this class kind of sets them up with that opportunity. We always provide dinner and childcare. This is really important because we hold the classes on weeknights, generally starting around 5:30, 6 o'clock. So some parents are rushing to get there after work. And these are things that remove the barriers to getting there so they don't have to scramble to figure out dinner for them and their kids. Many people don't have childcare available in the evening after they've gone to work. So providing that for them also helps get them in the door and continue to come week after week. Currently, Parent Project and Loving Solutions are being funded by a Title II grant that was awarded to juvenile diversion back in 2022. And this is the last year that we have that funding. So looking at the numbers from 2024, in spring of 24, I ran Loving Solutions and I had 39 parents enroll, 19 attended the first class and 13 actually graduated. And then in fall of 2024, I ran the Parent Project. I had 29 parents enroll, 18 attended the first class and 15 graduated. And so what these numbers are kind of showing us is that between the time that parents signed up for the class and the time that the first class is happening, something is happening, either life is getting in the way and they don't have the time anymore to attend or they feel like their problems have resolved enough that they don't need that support anymore. And then it's pretty typical to have about a 50% drop-off rate between the first class and the last class. And we saw last year that that, that level of attrition didn't happen. So that means we were actually really successful in having 13 and 15 graduates. So for my Teen Court partnership that was born out of the Title II grant fund, went in 2022, I was awarded $95,000. And that required that 70% of the funds go to a local nonprofit, Boys and Girls Clubs. Teen Court was an obvious choice because they have similar mission goals to juvenile diversion. They provide substance use counseling. They also use brief interventions. They're calling it by a different name now. They call it Youth Choose, but it's the same thing. And then they also stage hearings for teens who've committed low-level crimes. And they also go through a restorative practice. So part of the partnership involves me referring up to 10 youths per year to their program. We sponsor travel to the annual Teen Court Summit. We also fund the Parent Project in Fortuna. So Fortuna Teen Court is running those classes and we reimburse the costs using the grant funds. And then Teen Court is occasionally able to coordinate mentor, mentorships for teens who are, I'm sorry, who are referred to their program. And so they're able to use grant funds to pay for those mentorships as well. For Case Management Services, sometimes I refer youths to various other resources within the community. So that might be Arcata McKinleyville Family Resource Centers. They hook teens up or they can hook families up with food, sometimes bus passes, other resources, clothing, toiletries that they might happen to need. I also refer kids back to the wellness centers on Sunny Bray Middle School and Pacific Union Campus. Those are staffed by Humboldt IPA and they also provide counseling and emotional support, I believe. And then Humboldt County Youth and Family Services, that's the youth mental health program. There are counselors available through there. They often have a long waiting list, but I do help with referrals to that program. The adolescent treatment program is the county's substance use program. And so that's a more in-depth and involved substance use program than what I provide. And sometimes brief interventions isn't enough to, you know, get a kid going the right way. So we send them to kind of a higher level intervention. The Transitional Age Youth Program is a program that serves teens around, I think, 16 to 21. And that's intended to help young people transition from, you know, teens, their later teens, into early adulthood and independent living. Youth Services Bureau is a program that provides emergency housing for teens who are not safe in their home. And it's an alternative to foster care. It's intended to be a short-term program. It, you know, the length of time that kids are there kind of varies. And then Two Feathers is a mental health program for our native youth. And not shown on here is that I also sometimes coordinate and transport community service opportunities. So for example, last summer, I was transporting a teen to the Bayside Park Farm to do his volunteer service hours. And we did that every week all summer and that was really great for him. So finally, my six-month plan. My project goals for the remainder of 2025 are to continue and search for and apply for grants that will fund Arcata Juvenile Diversion going forward. And then I plan on running two fall sessions of parenting classes, one Parent Project and one Loving Solutions. And I'm in the process of coordinating with various city departments to reserve space and staff our childcare. And that's it.
Well, thank you very much. I've always heard about how valuable this program is and over the years. Cause this existed for, you probably could say how many years, but I would say it's probably been in effect for over 20 years. So we've had some kind of diversion.
Yeah, I believe so. It's been going on for kind of a long time, under different umbrellas and under different designs.
Yes. Well, thank you. Councilmembers, will you have any questions?
I was wondering, I know like the Parent Project is bilingual, taught in Spanish. Is the Loving Solutions also taught in Spanish?
They can be. We haven't actually run them in Spanish because we haven't been able to generate anybody to sign up. So it's been promoted in Spanish, it's been offered in Spanish and nobody has actually accepted that offer. We tried to get that in Fortuna also, where there's a larger population of Spanish speakers and no one signed up for that down there either. But all, both of those classes, which are produced by the same people, are available in Spanish, if that's something that people want.
Also, I just, I guess it's not a question, but just I'm thrilled to hear that TAE Transition Age Youth goes to age 18, or 21. So many of the other programs, I guess, stop at age 18, including if I understand correctly, foster programs. So this is a great way to transition from, you know, 18 into young adulthood. And then my final question is, have we identified any funding? And then my final question is, have we identified any funding when this year's funding expires?
Not yet. So that's one of my goals for the summer. My caseload kind of calms down a little bit over the summer, and I plan on using my time to, to do that.
And I guess that wasn't my last thing. The reason I asked about Loving Solutions is I've had several parents ask if it was taught in Spanish. So if I was to get together, what's the minimum number that you would need to teach that class in Spanish?
I think ten is a pretty good number, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, it's an excellent presentation.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you very much. I think it's always very valuable for people to understand we have this program available, and it can make a real difference in the youth for the future. But thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
So we're gonna have to take a quick break and ask Juan to please come in and figure out what is going on with our timer tonight, because, oh, it just came, no, it's something about the chords. Well, I guess if we hold, hold it up, I can put it under something and make it stand up. I could put it under this. Thank you. Let's see if we can do this without anything happening. Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Juan. So our next item on the agenda, oh, do we have any other staff reports? Okay, then we'll go on to oral and written communications, early time limited. The City Council values your comments, and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. The early section of the public comment is limited to fifteen minutes, and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of your time during public comment, the item is continued at the end of the meeting under item number twelve, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements, and there will be, also be a time to provide public comments specific to each item when the item is being reviewed by the council. So we will move on to oral communications. And would you please come forward? And those that would like to speak, would you mind lining up so we can move along? Thank you very much.
Just want me first, City Council? My name is Daniel Pacheco Sanchez.
So you need to come back to this microphone and just speak at the microphone.
Okay, sorry, I apologize.
Because your minutes are disappearing.
Okay, this is my only, this is what I want to say. I'm an urban planning from UCLA. I got a master's degree through a Fulbright grant. I'm born and raised in Oaxaca, I was a civil engineer there. So I can address all those items on the agenda, but you don't have one that will be just like, this is for this, this is for that, okay? Doggy parks, beautiful, but let's talk about leash law. I've been bitten because I have too much energy. I've been sprayed by a leopard in a zoo. The zookeeper said, "That's him, it's him, it's him." Okay? So doggies are doing their job, and I love my doggies, but use your leash. And this is the worst part, in Ramones, in Eureka, a dog beat me for sure. I have that cell phone of the girl. Look, doggies are doing their job, that's great, leash them. Don't give them a park, teach them, okay? Regarding, what is it, the Danko thing, that everybody's Danko, Danko, oh my God, Danko? There's Brownfields Act, where you can use money, federal money, to give money to tribes, to Danko, to City of Arcata, to whomever wants money, just stuff them in their mouth with money, I can give you that, okay? That's almost done. Sue my dog, he my boss, that's all.
Thank you very much. And so our next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Abraham from Arcata. At our last meeting, it was suggested that we attend anti-Palestinian racism training. So I did, and it was anything but anti-racist. Instead, I learned how to gaslight people and strike at the very foundations of democracy by crying racist whenever anyone supports the right of the Jews to govern themselves and defend themselves. Now, this is a well-known logical fallacy called poisoning the well. But do you know why it's called that? Because in the Dark Ages, Jews were slandered, falsely accused of spreading the bubonic plague on purpose and committing genocide by poisoning the wells. None of that was true, of course, but Jews are still accused of poisoning the well today using words like white genocide, the great replacement, apartheid, Hannibal Directive, and anti-Palestinian racism. Just like the Protocols of the Elders of Zion, a Russian government forgery created to promote violence against Jews, which still enjoys wide readership across the Middle East. Jews and other Zionists are accused of trying to control Arab resources, undermine traditional values, and engage in a war of ethnic cleansing against their neighbors. Not long ago, young Americans who were brainwashed by an internet disinformation campaign could join ISIS. Now they can be radicalized from the comfort of home. A lot of anti-Palestinian, or anti-Israel propaganda you hear in this very chamber is being read to you, word for word, from anti-Israel propaganda sources. I wrote this speech myself. When our president repeated radical hateful far-right rhetoric about a white genocide in South Africa, we knew better. I have no doubt that you're also sharp enough to recognize and dismiss the same tired old antisemitic lies in the strongest possible terms when they're spoken in this chamber. Since taking that course, I realized that the people who want a sister city with Gaza are the same ones who have always blamed the Jews for all the world's problems. And I don't know about you, but I want nothing to do with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker, please.
My name is Cynthia Poten, and I'm from Arcata. And I urge you to make Arcata a sister city. A city where food supplies are almost gone, where the medical system is shattered, where refugees are living in nylon tents, which in the summer heat make temperatures almost unbearable. At the same time, they're plagued with swarms of flies and mosquitoes because of the lack of sewage treatment. There's almost no humanitarian aid entering Gaza. And despite this, recently, the Israeli military boarded a humanitarian aid ship a hundred and twenty miles off the coast of Gaza, abducted the civilian crew, and confiscated food, prosthetics, and other lifesaving supplies. The question is, how can the innocent Palestinians be helped? Thanks to donations collected at the weekly sister city table at the farmer's market and to well-attended public events that he has organized, Ashan Leon has been able to send money to contacts in Gaza City who are distributing food and who are eager to collaborate with the sister city project. And they're donating generously at the table because they oppose the assault on innocent civilians and because they know that access to aid will save lives. I think making Arcata a sister city will encourage other towns to do what they can to help Palestinians who had no part in what happened on October seventh. There's strong support for you to do this. A petition that's been circulated at the, at the farmer's market has gained about two thousand signatures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Peace be with you, everyone, Farida Tikar Med here. I'd like, I feel the need to identify some very major discrepancies that happened in a council meeting, two council meetings ago, I believe it was on May twenty-first, when the people from Roger's Garage initially started coming up, letting you know that, you know, our community doesn't want you to go poison the children. Mayor Alex Stillman interrupted us and said, "Nobody's allowed to clap." And then Atkins Salazar elaborated that, "Oh, well, people aren't allowed to clap because then if there are other people who oppose that, say people who do want to poison the children, well, they need to feel safe to speak too." And ultimately, what you all are saying is that in order to preserve the freedom of expression, the freedom of expression must be suppressed. That's a hypocrisy, and in Islam, that's called black magic. Black magic in Islam means making things appear in ways other than what they are, or severing people's connection from reality and casting them into delusion. And might we all recollect that there isn't a witch or wizard who's gone bad who wasn't in Slytherin? Salazar? And I'm sure nobody here wants to go down that road, end up looking like Voldemort. Don't you agree, Matthews? Mm-hmm? Thank you, Arcata. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the council members always willing to listen to whatever we have to say, but holding restraint and never responding to us, no matter what we have to say. Thank you, Arcata. Beautiful day.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak during? Okay, who, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we have three hands raised.
Three hands, thank you very much.
Daniel, please go ahead.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. City Council, you know me, I know you, I love you. You guys are great people, doing great things, a tough job. I appreciate everything that you do. I'm here to advocate on behalf of a sister city between Arcata and Gaza. And all I'll say is that if, if feeding starving children who are starving because of our tax dollars is a controversial issue in our community, and we've got a really terrible problem in our community. On a broader scope, we are racing headlong into World War III on an issue that's completely related. So please consider writing an email urging the divestment of Calpers Retirement Fund from several companies that are contributing to the ongoing international war crimes unfolding before our eyes. Please consider doing this, not out of fear, not out of hate, but out of love. Do it for love, because fear is what is keeping us locked in this dynamic. Fear of each other, fear of, fear of others, fear of the unknown. And it's stoked by those who lose nothing. When a bomb is dropped, the, the leaders lose nothing. It's only the people that suffer, the innocent people of Iran and Israel and Palestine. All of those people that are suffering as a result of this terrible conflict need our help. Please, let's do the non-violent thing and, and request Calpers divest. It's, it's so simple, it would take you only moments out of your day and would cost you nothing and would gain you the risk.
Thank you so much for your, your time. Thank you. And our next person on Zoom, please.
Sean, please go ahead. Sean, please unmute.
Thank you very much. Yes, I really appreciate the opportunity to address you guys, and thank you so much for hearing us out. I mean, you've heard me say before, and I'll say again, I, I do very much want you guys to consider becoming a sister city with Gaza City. There are a few other issues in recent Arcata history that have received more public comments in support of any initiative. And so I hope that you take that into account when you're considering whether to become a sister city with Gaza City. And do requests that you get in touch, and we talk about how this can happen. Gaza City Municipality has said that they do want to be a sister city with Arcata, and they're willing to set up different meetings and, and enter into contact to, to make that happen. And I hope that you guys take that seriously. This is a, a community that is in a very desperate situation, and they could really use the support from the international community. And they're like a hand stretching out, asking for support. And, and I really hope that Arcata can be a hand reaching back. And, and I, I know that there's certainly broad public support for this. We do have many people signing our petitions still, and we're, we're getting ready to soon present these petitions to you and present, you know, our, our proposal for the sister city. And, you know, I really hope that this is taken seriously and passed, and, and we can really be a leader, and, and other communities can see what we're up to and, and get inspired and, and maybe do similar actions. And this can maybe be something that, that a lot of people say, you know, that what Israel is doing in Gaza is wrong. We need, we need to address this, we, we do not support our government.
Thank you very much for your comments. And our therapy speaker on Zoom, please.
Yeah, Mayor Stillman, since we have two more minutes left in the fifteen-minute public comment period, I did see two more hands raised, but I wanted to confirm with you.
So you have one more hand raised?
There is the original last hand of the three hands I mentioned to you. And in addition to that, two more people raised their hands after that.
Well, let's take our next speaker that had the raised hand.
Okay, thank you. Ellen, please go ahead.
Anti-Palestinian racism takes various forms, including denying the Nakba, justifying violence against Palestinians, failing to acknowledge Palestinians as an indigenous people with a collective identity belonging and rights in relation to occupied and historic Palestine, erasing the human rights and equal dignity and worth of Palestinians, excluding or pressuring others to exclude Palestinian perspectives, Palestinians and their allies, defaming Palestinians and their allies with slander such as being inherently antisemitic, a terrorist threat slash sympathizer, or opposed to democratic values. All these forms of anti-Palestinian racism have occurred repeatedly in this chamber with not a peep from any of you. I believe there's a difference between free speech and hate speech, is there not? I also believe your lack of understanding about how anti-Palestinian racism shows up in our community has prevented you from taking popular actions in solidarity with Palestinians. So I do invite each of you to look up antipalestinianracism.org and read through the information there carefully. The popular action I want to highlight tonight is that each of you send a letter to the Calpers Board of Directors demanding they divest from genocide. Please do this tonight. The letter has been drafted for you, and the email address to send it to has been provided. There is no reason not to send this letter. The situation in Gaza is incredibly urgent. People are being starved and killed by the Israeli military when they seek food at the US-run so-called aid distribution sites, which are actually traps. Yesterday, over seventy people were killed seeking aid in Khan Yunis, and over two hundred people were injured by drone strikes, tank shelling, and gunfire. We have seen the videos and heard the firsthand accounts. This is not propaganda or antisemitism, but facts on the ground. Your constituents do not want their city to be invested.
Thank you very much. So we've met our fifteen minutes, so we're going to go on with our agenda. And we'll be moving on to, our next item is the consent calendar. On the consent calendar, the approval to waive, well, all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading, the consent calendar, council members can request that an item be removed for a separate discussion. Members of the public may comment on any item remaining on the consent calendar in the period before the vote. So A, approval to waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only of any ordinance on the agenda. B, approve the minutes of the City Council's special meeting, June fourth, 2025. C, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of June fourth, 2025. D, biweekly report and disbursements. E, approve and revise the hiring and recruitment incentive program administrative policy to include out-of-state lateral police officers and classification of sergeant, lieutenant, and police chief. F, reassign Planning Commissioner Chair Scott Davies to a resident member and reappoint Commissioner Amanda Hickey to the Planning Commission as a large member for the term expiring March thirtieth, 2027, pursuant to the Arcata Municipal Code, Section 2202B. G, approve the purchase of water meter boxes from Pace Supply Corporation in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and nine hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents, and approve necessary association-related actions. Are there any items on the consent calendar? Are there any items on the consent calendar a council member would like to remove? Okay, is there anyone on the public that would like to comment on the consent calendar before we vote on it?
And so the last three items are of interest to me. And I just would like to say that, um, I hope some consultation is done with people concerned about our law enforcement and our hiring policies and incentive programs. So I would hope that you would, um, consult with some people who are, are very interested in how that, um, department is run and operated. So that's something I think is important. I also recall, um, on the Planning Commission, how people reapplied to become members of the Planning Commission and were not, um, reappointed and other people came on and then new people left. And this is all very interesting about re-sign, reassigning positions on the Planning Commission. Um, I don't know if anything came out in a discussion for the public prior to this, but, um, it's all very interesting to look at. And then finally, um, huge amount of money for water meter boxes. Anything over, I mean, this is $143,000, $144,000. You know, maybe we need these things, but when that kind of money is being consent calendared, I just really would like the public, would like to know how our city monies are being spent more accurately and specifically, um, instead of just, uh, accepting what's on a consent calendar. And I've said this many, many times, I think we really need to have a limit dollar amount of things that can go on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the, um, council chambers that would like to speak on the, uh, consent calendar this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom?
I do see one hand raised on Zoom.
All right.
Naomi, please go ahead. Naomi, please unmute yourself. Naomi, I see that you're unmuted, um, but we cannot hear you.
Okay, well, maybe she could come back at the three-minute time since she's unable to unmute. On the consent calendar.
Naomi, um, I see that you muted yourself again. Can you please try unmuting one more time? Okay, I, I don't think it's working.
Well, thank you very much. So, um, are there any, uh, com- comments among the council members or shall we have a vote? Someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a second. Did you get both of that, the move and second? Okay, thank you. Um, any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is old business. It's A, public hearing to receive public comment on Rogers Garage Affordable Housing Project. I'm going to ask the city staff to please give us an update. Thank you, David Loia.
Yeah, good evening, council. Um, for you tonight is the Rogers Garage, um, uh, application for program income, uh, once again. It was noticed again for a public hearing tonight, but tonight we are asking that you uh, receive this brief staff report, open the public hearing and take public comment and then close the public hearing. Um, and as I'll describe in a little bit more detail, we'll, uh, renotice this public hearing for a future date. I want to emphasize that there is no action being taken tonight. There's no action on the agenda. The council cannot take an action. Um, and so we would, uh, inform the council and the public, uh, that this discussion is going to continue. Obviously, because it's a public hearing, people may comment if they wish, um, but the council will not be, uh, considering any action for several months. So basically what happened was, uh, we found some new information as we're going through the SEQA process and, um, that's causing us to take a step back. SEQA is first and foremost a disclosure, um, and discovery process. The intent is to ensure that the decision-makers and the public are aware of the, um, uh, the potential environmental impacts of a decision, uh, before they make that decision. Specifically in, uh, Section 15300.2 of the SEQA guidelines, uh, there are exceptions from the categorical exemptions. As you're aware, as you're aware, um, the categorical exemptions were proposed for, uh, this particular action. Uh, one, specifically, the, there's an exception from those exemptions for projects that are on the Cortezia list. And it was brought to, uh, my attention last week that this, uh, project is, site is on the Cortezia list. Uh, in addition, the, uh, Waterboard staff have, uh, reversed their decision about whether they plan to regulate the site that's been identified on, on the, uh, project site as a potential wetland. And so we are, uh, taking a step back and reassessing the environmental impact. Uh, so, um, I guess just to close, um, I will note that your council received, uh, several pu- written comments. Uh, the comments that were received before the staff report was, uh, published are an attachment A to the staff report. In addition, you received several comments that came in after that and those are included, uh, associated with the agenda item on the, uh, on the city's website. And then, uh, lastly, I wanted to inform the council and the public that we have started uploading materials about this particular project to the major developments website. And so all the public comment will, uh, be seen there as well. And, um, I am happy to answer any questions that you have about the staff report tonight, but I would highly recommend you just cut to, uh, public comment, uh, and, uh, let folks speak if they wish. Um, I guess one last thing I will say is that, uh, in the, uh, coming weeks, uh, we'll be proposing a, uh, town hall so that folks can, you know, come in and speak, uh, to staff and the developers and get questions asked. Uh, a number of comments that I've received have acknowledged that, uh, this format of being able to speak on an item for a few minutes, uh, isn't, um, meeting the needs of the neighborhood. And so we're going to schedule an additional, uh, town hall-style meeting uh, to be noticed, uh, in the relative near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the council that has anything they'd like to say at the moment?
I do, was what we were going back and forth about when you were talking, sorry. Um, I will, I have to recuse myself on this matter and so I won't, um, I have a financial conflict in that my husband will be taking a position for Danco later on. He's not currently working for them, but he will be. And so I won't be able to engage, um, via email or on the phone or talk to my colleagues about the project just to make sure that, um, everything's on the up and up. And so, um, that's why I haven't responded to a lot of your emails. I was waiting to see, but he has been hired and so I need to step back. So I probably will, I will prepare just a short, um, response that I will be able to send back to folks when they email me so you know why I'm not responding. So, um, anyway, so I will be back after this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I want to make sure everyone understands that this evening the council will not be taking any action as, um, described by our Community Development Director. But we will be taking your input and we do thank you very much for all the letters and comments that we've dealt with and received from you and we've been holding on to those and keeping them. So with that, I would like to open the public hearing and for anyone who would like to come forward and speak, please do. And you all have three minutes, so thank you.
Hey, good evening, council. Um, so just, um, wanted to be clear too, you guys are not doing actionable items. But, um, you can hear, uh, you, you can hear things today that are, uh, that will not be prejudicial for you. And you can also discuss amongst yourselves those items too. And that without any fear of bias, as David suggested earlier, towards future projects. So you may, you know, not actionable, but you can talk about them. So, um, these comments here specifically address the, the lack of site readiness. The city has been involved in one way or another for 20 years over the aspects, all aspects of the site contamination, yet somehow we just discovered that the site's now on a Cortezia list? How did that happen? I mean, okay, whatever. But now everybody understands the seriousness of the site's toxicity issues. It's serious and, and we also understand its location downstream from the school. But, so do you guys still intend to use federal funds going forward without another oops moment? Uh, please direct staff to begin federally required environmental assessment. You might even consider doing the dreaded EIR. Uh, yes, that means more work, but we do owe it to the school kids for a little extra effort to get the facts straight, as we've not gotten them straight before. Staff is, uh, I would also recommend to, uh, consider, have they even considered alternate locations for this site? You know, uh, we haven't even talked about that. So this, this site is increasingly looking like damaged goods. And not just because it's damaged goods, but not just because of this clouded environmental status that we're all talking about here. But it's also, it turns out, its financial bones might be damaged as well. And it appears that there's a previously, previously undisclosed complicated title situation with the property. Okay? And, um, so before committing taxpayer money, the public deserves to know the full accounting of this million-dollar funding gap, okay? So let's figure this out because it is time to put the horse before the cart. So let's start tonight. We can ask some questions. We don't need to take anch- actions. And, uh, so, um, by the way, people, SEQA, complicated, right? Pretty complicated. Well, it is. But the foundation of SEQA law, you know what it is? Look before you leap.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Are you going to keep this up? Thank you.
My name's Kevin. I live in Bayside. And, uh, rise in opposition to the Rogers Garage Development Plan as it's been presented so far. Case, since this is on the record, if anyone's watching or listening who doesn't know, it's a construction of, a project of four buildings, three stories each, atop a plot of land that is pretty dramatically contaminated with toxic chemicals and heavy metals. As was mentioned just now, a number of letters from local residents were submitted. Since they won't be read, I just want to share a few excerpts now. Someone who's been living here for some 40 years wrote, "For many years, Pete Damassa, who sold to Danco, allowed his friends and associates to dump construction debris, appliances, sheet rock, solvents, asphalt, mattresses, paint, auto parts, and batteries, brake pads, lumber, wiring, windshields, and others onto nearby parcels." Another 30-plus-year resident of Bayside writes, "It makes no sense that the city of Arcata would invest so heavily in a proposed housing project on a site so toxic that no one should live there, nor be exposed to the heavy metal fallout that can be predicted if the soil is stirred and displaced by heavy equipment." And the last one from a local medical professional, quote, "Even minimal lead exposure, especially to children, can have irreversible effects. Brain damage, seizures, decreased mental and learning capacity, behavior, hearing, speech, and other nervous system and developmental damage in addition to kidney and other organ injury." Personally, I get overwhelmed by big systems. Big budgets are complicated. City planning is intertwined with a lot of different factors, I understand. And I assume that people who work in local government, all of you included, are trying to do your best to get things done and do the most good. But as I learn more and more about this project, I'm left asking a very simple question. Is this a good idea? Probably not.
Thank you very much. So I, I'm going to ask all of you not to clap. I know you're going to want to do that. And one of our speakers during oral communications mentioned how we, I asked not to clap. And then Stacy talked about how if, if we clap, some, maybe someone was going to want to really support this project and they won't feel comfortable because everyone's clapping for those that don't support the project or vice versa. So I'm, I would ask you not to clap and thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Oh, you're clapping anyway.
Good evening. I'm a resident and property owner, um, within the block where the, uh, property that you're considering, uh, to build, uh, yeah, originally I thought it was a 54-unit and now I read it's a 45-unit, um, building right close to me. And, uh, I'm happy to see the article in the Mad River Union that the SEQA thing will not go through. So it will, um, hopefully there'll be an environmental impact. But I want to address other things. Living in the community now for over 15 years, I've seen other things, especially with the influx of more people and the influx of the cars coming to Old Arcata Road. So the recent roadwork that was done, um, is wonderful. I want to commend you for the sidewalk. I walk a dog twice a day. It's great. But it's impacted already the community. Uh, adults ride their bicycles on the sidewalk. There is no car parking anymore on the sides except after the school where the school garden is. So people are parking in the bike lanes, which makes it hard for bikes. And that leads me to number two. We do not have a police presence in Bayside. I'm always asking, where are they? Where are they? Cars go, and I know because I walk it twice a day with a dog, all the way from Sunnybury to the post office. They're going usually 50 miles an hour. And it's a 25-mile zone the whole way. And so I request that we at least see a police officer occasionally, especially when children are walking to school, because I see them alone and I think that's very important. A third one is, um, there's no city bus that comes to Bayside. And being a little elderly, I thought about five years ago there was going to be a situation where the city bus was going to at least come to the Bayside post office. Now, if you, uh, want to ride the bus, which has always been that way, you have to be in Sunnybury. So I have a concern for the people, if that building gets built, who's going to think and research about living there? Because the people might not have a car, they can't afford one. And then they either have to ride or, uh, ride a bike or walk. And, um, my biggest concern, I'll say it in 21 seconds, um, is Highland and Golf Course Road are the only two roads there. And Golf Course Road goes through, but remember, we're in a tsunami zone there. And the impact of all of that many people living there, you won't have the opportunity to get out. Thank you. I have more. I'll continue next.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Roberts and I live on Irene Street, just above the proposed project. I'm a retired wildlife biologist. I worked for 32 years for the US Forest Service and the US Fish and Wildlife Service. I have extensive experience with NEPA, preparing EA's, Fonzie's, EIS's biological opinions and SEQA as well. I am pleased to see that in the latest staff notes that there is an understanding that this project would not, um, comply with the CADX under SEQA. So that's good. But since federal funding is anticipated to be allocated for the proposed development on the block grant and is an interrelated action to the property acquisition, it seems most efficient and I would recommend you consider combining your SEQA and NEPA processes. Many people do that. It's much more efficient. They're very similar analyses. It also, I also noted in the staff notes that it states that a determination of no significant impact will be made in the EA. This is predetermined and you really can't make that determination before you do an analysis of the EA. So based on the level of community, uh, concern over the lack of a thorough and transparent cleanup plan for the hazardous waste, which has been discussed by several previous people, the size and scope of the proposed development with potentially insufficient parking, that was also addressed, in an area that's already seriously impacted by traffic and parking issues from the school and the cafe, could truly jeopardize the health and safety of the community. For example, Highland Road, which goes up to Irene Street, often becomes a one-lane road with people parking on both sides, all the way up to the top and around the corner. There's just insufficient parking and that's partly because of the Old Arcata Road Improvement Project, which the previous- Project, which the previous speaker spoke. It's excellent. Bike lanes are great, but the parking situation is serious. It's limited. People are parking in bark lanes, bike lanes. They're parking all over the place. I think a forty-five unit development would be a serious impact. Under both SEQA and NEPA, significant impacts to physical conditions such as the proposed large multifamily housing development and its associated traffic and parking issues are both direct and indirect physical changes, which must be addressed. Social and economic impacts under NEPA include disrupting community well-being because of safety and traffic hazards. I'm unaware of any potential mitigation proposed for these hazards. I'm running out of time. I believe that through scoping and an initial study, there may be enough potential for significant impacts to warrant, as someone previously stated, preparation of an E I R, E I S.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll submit them via email.
Oh, yes, you may if you'd like.
Perfect.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Hello. My name is Michelle Warner. I live on Highland Street in Bayside, and I am here to say the same thing that I said in the meeting before. I believe that this project and digging into that soil will poison my family and the school. I really don't need three minutes because really all I want to say is no. And no is very short and concise. But since I have time, I just want to ask you this. How can you vote to spend over a million taxpayer dollars on a site that's been contaminated since at least two thousand and two and more likely since the fifties? Why didn't the staff know it was on the federal Cortez list of dangerously toxic sites? How can you commit public funds before proper environmental review? The Water Board has ordered more testing. SEQA and NEPA both require that the potential impacts be thoroughly identified, analyzed, and mitigated prior to the project approval. And why haven't you looked at other sites? The Mellow Act requires it. Has staff presented any other alternatives? What about the eight-acre dog park? Don't play fast and loose with our health, please. This isn't complicated. It's a contaminated site next to a school. Just say no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Wilson, and I live in Bayside. I timed this, so I'm going to get at it. I'm here in opposition to the proposed Village View Commons Project at Rogers Garage Site in Bayside. Note that I make the distinction that this project is in Bayside, which is important to us out there in the outskirts. We care about the character and the heart of our community. I've owned a home in Bayside for twenty-six years, and I've lived there for over thirty. Here are some of my concerns. Excuse me. The site is contaminated. We all want the site cleaned up. Water Board documents record continuous discharge of contaminated storm water from the site. Current owners have not initiated a thorough environmental cleanup of the site despite prodding for over twenty years. Literally, there is a long record of non-cooperation with the state regarding this project or this property. City development funds should not be used to reward negligent behavior. I'll be honest, this feels like a quota-based planning. Our neighborhood is being used to meet the city's housing element needs, regardless of the feelings of neighbors or the impacts of the character and function of our beloved community. Surely contaminated land across the street from an elementary school and far from the city center cannot be the best place for the city to build high-density housing. I'm going to repeat that. Surely contaminated land across the street from an elementary school and far from the city center when you're on foot cannot be the best place for the city to build high-density housing. This feels like a desperate play for the city to generate and maintain their funding stream for low-income housing. Have they run out of sites in Rogers Garage as the only option left? Recall the original proposal for the site, which was two preschools, and somewhere along the line, the focus became high-density, low-income housing. How did this happen? And when did this happen? Strangely, no one was in the neighborhood was informed. I just found out about this recently. So here we are. Whose interests are being served here? The city's? There is little to no benefit to the, to the community from this proposed development, quite the opposite. Is this a Danco project? Is this a city project? Is this a both project? It feels like both. Repeat collaboration. It does not feel like a community-driven project with the heart of Bayside, its residents and its families in mind. I look forward to future opportunities to provide input regarding the publicly funded development of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Peace, everyone. Furu Tika Ahmed over here again. Bayside resident, live out on the Jacoby Creek. I agree with everything that the previous speakers in my community have been saying. I'd also just say, you know, like, I think it's at least a responsible decision y'all made when comparing it to the lesser of two evils to postpone the decision instead of just voting yes right now. You know, an even more ethical decision would be, as Nancy Reagan once said, just say no. When people want to give their children chemical substances, just say no. Then on that note, a similar note at least, I think it would be a wise decision to really go over First Amendment laws and what the freedom of speech actually covers. So since the founding of this nation, there are certain things that First Amendment doesn't protect, and part of that would also include true threats. So a true threat is a threat of violence. There's been recent Supreme Court rulings such as Countermen versus Colorado, twenty-twenty-three.
You should be directing your comments towards the topic.
This is, if you let me finish, and you're wasting my time over here. And Countermen versus Colorado, twenty-twenty-three, the case clarified that for speech to be considered a true threat and thus unprotected, the speaker must have had some subjective understanding of the statement threatening, the statement's threatening nature. This means the speaker must have acted at least recklessly, meaning they knew of or consciously disregarded a substantial risk that their communication would be viewed as a threat of violence. It's very clear from everyone who's spoken here so much that what you all have been communicating to us, what Danco has been communicating to us, is a threat of violence. When you're having a company trying to build on a toxic waste dump without proper environmental regulations, that is a threat of violence. That is not protected under the First Amendment freedom of speech. Everything we have been saying is when we're clapping. This is protected under First Amendment speech. If you have people coming up here and say, I want to poison the kids. I want to do this and that, you know, in a hypothetical scenario, not that I'm saying that, that's not protected as under First Amendment. You know, so that's something that y'all should take into consideration when you're making your decisions because you could be held liable if something like that would have happened after being informed of this. And I think it would be even better, you know, if you actually had the police going after real criminals instead of persecuting the innocent as if they are criminals while placing the real criminals on a pedestal as if they are innocent. You know, that's called sympathy for the devil. It's the portraying good as evil and evil as good. Sinners as saints and saints as sinners. And it's a satanic philosophy, and I'd like to see less of those kinds of philosophies in my community, God-fearing community. Thank you. Have a beautiful day.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Tara Moss. I'm a medical provider in this community, have been for thirty-four years and have concern about this site, not because I don't support more housing for our homeless. I absolutely do. But I have lived near, next door to this site for all these years and have been over there when it was the Rogers Garage and saw how they dumped so many toxic fluids. The ground there was, had a black sheen from all the fluids dumped on it. So this isn't the site to disrupt the soils. It's so important as we evaluate a project for the safety of our community that we look at it from a health and safety perspective. A year ago, we came to you and said, we're concerned about this project. This land has not been cleaned. And we were told, we were told that it was clean and by Danco. And so it's really important that we don't have the fox guarding the chicken coop, that that the company who owns it, who isn't in compliance with environmental law, is the one who's been asked to do the assessment of viability. And there isn't, that there hasn't been oversight and that the city council needs to hold them responsible to make sure that what they do, whether it's for any project, that we have third-party safety oversight. I can tell you that the effects of heavy metals on children are significant. And if any disruption of that soil, as the soil becomes aerosolized and gets on tires and gets on the bottoms of shoes and gets spread over the community, that's a health risk. And we can't just trust that they say it's been remediated. We really need to do the work to make sure that it really is safe. This site is not the right site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Ellen Cook, Bayside resident. I have spoken to each of you about this issue and agree with many of the speakers prior. Keeping, one item to keep in context is risks versus benefits. You've heard about the risks. People don't get injured from heavy metal toxicity. They get damaged. That's really the right word because it's lifelong. As far as on the benefit side, there are options. One item that I brought forward is this could be a solar field. Now we have a genuine community benefit, and the risk would be negligible because the excavation needed would be negligible. So to keep in context, any project should consider risks and benefits and not just assume that housing is the one and only option. It's not. The community could use enough electricity to power approximately five hundred homes from this site. So a solar field should be considered as an option. I'm glad SEQA will demand that you look at options. This is one I would like on the table. And housing on this site, again, to repeat, is really a danger because it's not just injury, it's not just the common cold that people get, it will be damage. And there is no, no parent in our community that will willingly accept that kind of risk for the kids that are here or for their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jim Hartzorn. I live on Highland Street. Thank you for your service here this evening. I think your suggestion of a town hall is an excellent idea because there are a lot of issues that have not, that just can't be addressed in this quick thing. My point, my talking points were where there's public and private money put, being put together, I would like to see some, a clear accounting of where this money is going, why it's going, and so on. And a town hall might be a good place for that. Also, it's, this project is only going to happen because it will financially benefit the developer, which at the expense of all the neighborhood. My property valuers are going to go down, and the property value of Rogers Garage will certainly go up, and the developer will make some money there. Mr. Johnson being a, a, well, anyway. I think it's not really very nice to put low-income people on top of a, and make them live on top of a toxic waste dump. I don't think that's, the optics of that aren't very good. There are also dip project, problems with density, traffic, parking. That is not a walking neighborhood. Everyone will need a car to get around because the closest grocery store is a mile away. There's no bus service. In the, oh, one, in the Loco, I think it was, they published a picture of the proposed development, and here's a city transit bus parked in front of it, and the buses just don't run there. And so people will have to walk a mile to the grocery store. And I think that a much more appropriate place for this would be the Creamery District. It's already zoned, and I think you've already made your decisions on developing that area, and it's walkable, and I think it's just a much better, better thing. And in the words, so sum up, in the words of our nice conflict counselor there, just because we can do something doesn't mean we should do something. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Council members, Kevin Johnson from Bayside. My number one concern about Rogers Garage is the level of toxicity of this former wrecking yard and the proper identification of toxic toxins, both onsite and offsite, and the cleanup of these toxic soils. I remember when I moved here over forty, forty-some years ago, that hillside behind Rogers Garage was covered in wrecked cars. Half of them, some buried. People don't forget that if they've been around here. That place was just, you know, a mess. I remember twenty years ago, when Danco got out there and sandblasted the Quonset Hut that was covered with lead paint in the middle of the day during school hours when children were out there playing. People don't forget that. It's good, it's good to learn that the Water Board just sent Dan Johnson a letter requiring new monitoring wells for water data since there has been no updated information for the last twenty years. Remediation is not complete for this Brownfield Site. My second concern is that the project fits in with the character of the neighborhood of Bayside, a large, largely rural community on the edge of the city. In the, in the brand-new general plan vision statement that says new development complements the character of the neighborhood in which it is located, that this development does not complement the neighborhood. The development's proposed design looks like the Plaza Point Apartments building and does not bland or complement the character of Bayside. A more suitable style, a two-storied cottage or craftsman-style development with open space and greenery and keeping with the area would be more appropriate. My third concern is the already apparent lack of parking and serious traffic congestion across from Jacoby Creek School twice daily and during school events. Adding fifty additional units into the neighborhood already strained is problematic. We are also experiencing increased speeds of Old Arcata Road since the upgrade of the road last year, and I have safety concerns for bicyclists, pedestrians, and wildlife with this additional development. I hope that SEQA will, will address these issues and more and provide the community with alternatives that help the community become a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kari Samlaska, and I live next door to the proposed project that's going on. I wanted to start tonight by saying thank you. A couple of council and staff members did respond to letters that we've written and took time to actually meet with us and talk to us, and I greatly appreciate that, and I wish all of you would. It's important for you to know that we're sane, rational people, and we just have some points we'd like to discuss. Namely, you've heard them all tonight. I don't need to repeat all of them. It's, this is not the place for this to go on. There's so many other options that could go on this property. I do have a question tonight, and I guess I have a question because I want it to go on public record, and I know you can't answer it tonight, but I would like an answer, whether it comes out in a staff report or in council minutes or whatever. And my question is why? Why this property? Why this developer? People have given you many, many reasons tonight why this property is not good for it, because of the, of the debris that's there, because of the toxins. The properties there and behind it still have cars and car parts. Mother Nature's kind of struck back, and they're covered up by blackberries at this point in time and, and other greenery. So it makes it look like an idyllic place again, but the debris is there. The toxins are there. That hasn't changed. So why is it so important that it's this property? It doesn't fit in Bayside with what you're proposing for those buildings. Since we started having these discussions more recently, we've taken it upon ourselves to actually walk Arcata quite a bit. We go out on walks on a, on a regular basis, and we've chosen specifically to walk the neighborhoods of Arcata. neighborhoods of Arcata. And there are actual places that are flat lots, that are not wetlands, that are not toxic, that could be used for this purpose. And why aren't those being looked at? And why is this developer so important? What is it that's pushing this project? Because as I've started researching, going through notes, I don't see the city putting the same amount of effort into using other developers and looking at other pieces of property for these same purposes. And I'm just curious as to what it is that pushes this focus.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Kenyon. I live in Arcata. I actually live in the Creamery District, directly adjacent. I live in a single-family home, but I'm right next to affordable townhouses that were built by Danco. The whole area was actually, I think it was an industrial site that the, the development of the housing paid for it to get cleaned up. And I was so grateful to find a house in Arcata because so few go on the market every year. It's, you know, there are so many studies about how important it is for low-income people to live in a neighborhood with people that are, have more social and intellectual and political capacity than them and not to have a concentrated poverty situation, but like living in this neighborhood that has this economic diversity, I've realized that it's, it's so beneficial to, to me. And it's what makes my neighborhood vibrant. There are so many kids because poverty is young and I bring, they all play in the neighborhood. They're all different ages. And then a couple that lives in the townhome that's right next to my house, they're a retired couple. And I leave my garage door open all the time because I'm absent-minded and they're at home during the day, so they remember to, they come over and shut it for me. And I think it's great for my kids too, to just have the perspective of, of being around kids that aren't all of the same, you know, income category. And that's something great about your, I mean, Arcata. And I think that, you know, my neighborhood and this neighborhood are pretty equidistant from this town hall. Like I will bike to Bayside. I don't like biking very much because I'm scared of roads, but that is such a lovely neighborhood to walk and jog and bike in that I, I'll do it for fun, not just, you know. It would be, I would love to live in this neighborhood and that school is such a desirable school to go to. When you look at where people want to cite affordable housing, it's near goods and services, especially schools, grocery stores, pharmacies, and hardware stores, which this is all super close to, and also in higher resource areas, which this is. And so I know, I just wanted to come and, and share my experience. And also my property value has nothing but like gone up incredibly since I purchased my house, despite living directly next to an affordable housing project. So just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Yeah, my name's Aaron Bennett. I live in Bayside. I've got a daughter that goes to Jacoby Creek School. I've lived there for 12, 13 years. I don't really need to repeat everything that's been said here. There's a lot of obvious concerns with the property. I come from an engineering background. I've performed a lot of industrial site cleanups in a number of different industries and some of the numbers that I've seen on the reports that have been provided here are scary. The measures that are being proposed just to keep the site under wraps as is, aren't currently maintained. You can walk by the site, you can look through the fence, you can see that tarps are degraded. They've been there for probably as long as the property's been purchased. I have no faith that the people that are in charge of the project that's being put forth have any intent to do anything but the bare minimum out there. And all they can go on is what's been tested for. There are a number of things that have been mentioned here as far as, you know, brake pads, dumping, uncharacterized stuff in the ground. I don't feel like adequate testing has been done in order to, you know, even say that the measures that have been proposed even 20 years ago are adequate. Some of the reports that have been submitted discuss contaminant plumes that leave the site, known to have left the site, and nobody's really done anything to step in and really provide any enforcement. I think they've tried as far as the Regional Water Quality Board. Noncompliance over and over and over again. It really needs to be addressed and I don't know why it hasn't been taken more seriously. I know that it was also mentioned that some of the development standards that have been previously required to be reviewed have not necessarily been considered for this project. I understand that the general plan update just happened. There were changes that happened in that that allowed certain things to go forth that are now happening. It seems like this site is maybe not well-considered. Everything around it is low-density housing. This site is high-density, mixed commercial. It just seems like there needs to be more engagement. And I appreciate the fact that this is not a decision meeting and we've, we've pushed it back further to evaluate some of the CEQA concerns that have been brought up in the past, and I appreciate that we've been listened to in that respect. So thank you. I appreciate your consideration going forward and there are alternate sites that have been proposed that we could look at that really should be considered. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors, city staff, Mr. Lawyer. My name is Justin Ragnier. I'm a resident of Bayside. I've got a couple of kids at the school there. Just, you know, first off, for the record and all the legal folks, I wanted to get on the record as being in opposition to the project as it is currently scoped. I want to reiterate and incorporate by reference the 10 points that were brought up in the lawyer's letter, which are on the record here. And want to second the request of the three action items which are delaying the decisions, resolving the contradictions, and providing full transparency. But rather than belabor all those points, wanted to speak a little more directly to the situation in which we find ourselves. This site is at the bottom. So my, my predecessor, Aaron, is, he's, he's very modest, but he, he has a stamp. He, he knows his business. My understanding, and he would understand it better, is that it's at the bottom of the watershed and it's polluted. And we do have to do something about this site. Simply capping something that's at the bottom of the watershed and hoping that all the water goes over it and there's no subsurface flow into the bay is, is a fool's optimism. What we have done so far, it would seem, is try to move something quickly. And while we as citizens, constituents, appreciate folks getting things done, I think that the involvement at this point has made it very clear that we're not going to ram this through and proceed in that manner. What I'm asking for the commission to do is to work with us. We have many professionals within this group. We have many folks that are devoted to the city, devoted to the county. Some of us are also public servants. We would like to work with the developer and with the city to find something that does not get a three-page summary of a multiplicity of legally valid complaints that will stall this project forever. We'd like to get there. I think as elected, our numbers are large, our numbers are growing. Let's get on the record so we don't hear any further discussion about how you couldn't get in touch with us. Let us also have further conversation. It was with a bit of alarm that we saw this agenda, that this is comments on the proposal. We do not want these comments here to stand in place of legally required due process comments when you want to take further action. And before you do, please get in touch so we can work together.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments and next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary and I used to live and dog sit and dog walk in Bayside. But I have shared with the council and staff before, because I come here often, my father was a big proponent of learning history and learning history, so you learn from the history and you don't repeat history that you don't want to happen again. And so I'm just going to read something about, something when I was studying environmental planning at UC Davis in the late 70s. The history of Love Canal. Love Canal was a neighborhood in Niagara Falls, New York, United States, infamous as the location of a landfill that became the site of an environmental disaster discovered in 1977. Decades of dumping toxic chemicals killed residents and harmed the health of hundreds, often profoundly. The area was cleaned up over 21 years in a superfund operation. The history of Love Canal, it was sold to a school district for a dollar. Over the next three decades, that was in the 1950s, it attracted national attention for the public health problems originating from the former dumping of toxic waste on the grounds. This event displaced numerous families, leaving them with longstanding health issues and symptoms of high white, high white blood cell and leukemia. Subsequently, the federal government passed the superfund law in 1980. I mean, there's more to go on about Love Canal, but I remember it having a big, huge impact on me because it was people moving into where waste was existing as opposed to the waste moving to where the people were. We ought not ever move people into a place that's toxic. And there's been a lot of suggestions for alternatives, alternative locations, and alternative things that could be done to that particular site. Remember Love Canal. Lois Gibbs is still alive and she was the activist who called attention to this and she's got an organization. And I think some of us should go out there and talk to her about this particular site and what we might do to solve the problem of what this site represents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? I don't see anyone, so do we have anyone on Zoom? And how many people do we have?
Yeah, we have six hands raised on Zoom.
I'm sorry, how many?
Six hands are raised.
Six or 16?
Six.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, let's start with our Zoom callers.
Okay, Rebecca, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca Smith. I'm the managing attorney at Legal Services of Northern California. Thank you for the invitation to comment on this important item. Our law firm's mission is to provide quality legal services to empower the poor and identify and defeat the causes and effects of poverty. Many of our clients struggle to afford housing in Arcata due to insufficient supply of affordable housing. The proposed project at Roger's Garage provides 45 units of income-restricted housing from 30% to 60% of the area median income. This could be housing for seniors on fixed incomes, working-class families. It could include teachers and other employees at Jacoby Creek School or workers at the cafe across the street. I comment in support of this project because it will help to alleviate a major problem experienced by our clients and community. I also comment to explain why the council has clear legal obligations to move forward with the project. The City of Arcata's housing element includes the policy goal of promoting affordable housing through policy HE 14, HE 17, HE 18, HE 20, and HE 22. All of these policies outline different ways that the city committed to supporting the development of low-income housing, and the proposed development at Roger's Garage is consistent with the city's goals. Especially relevant to the Roger's Garage project is policy HE 18, which commits the city to providing incentives to developers to support lower-income residential developments in all areas of the city to ensure neighborhood diversity. The Roger's Garage projects represent meaningful progress towards this policy goal because it is an affordable housing project in a neighborhood with no affordable housing. In fact, there are no multifamily housing properties, affordable housing properties in the Jacoby Creek School District. In addition to the housing element obligation, the city must comply with state fair housing laws and must affirmatively further fair housing. Assembly Bill 686, which is a California law codifying municipalities' obligations to affirmatively further fair housing, states that affirmatively furthering fair housing means taking meaningful, meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. The law requires jurisdictions to engage in community development that affirmatively further spare housing and not to take action that is inconsistent with this obligation. Most of the city's affordable housing is concentrated on the opposite side of the city, including the Valley West neighborhood and northern part of the city. This project will affirmatively further fair housing in Arcata by providing quality affordable housing in a neighborhood that currently has no affordable housing. We hope that the city approves, continues with approval process for the Roger's Garage affordable housing project when it comes back before the city council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, on Zoom.
Lisa, please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Lisa Brown from Arcata, Bayside. It is good news that the city is now on the same page as community members of Bayside that a project of this complexity is subject to CEQA. In order to determine whether or not this proposed project will or could have a substantial or potentially substantial adverse change to any of the physical conditions in the area, we will need studies and lots of them. Traffic, historic, safety, noise, air quality, as well as off-site migration studies of toxins. This toxic site has remained as such for many, many years in what once was a swamp, according to a newspaper clip from the 1940s before the site was developed into a garage. The paper reads, and I quote, "She was willing to sell an unproductive 1.25-acre parcel of it to him for the construction of his first garage. It was swampy and had to be drained before the corrugated iron wood frame, false-fronted building was built on this site. An initial study will not be complete without a full assessment of the issues surrounding this problematic site. I believe that an EIR will be the most appropriate environmental document to contend with not only the many large issues surrounding the development, but also the controversy over the project at this time. An EIR will not only provide information, but will provide the neighborhood with alternatives that may be more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, enhancing it and building a better community for everyone." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Call-in user one, please go ahead. Call-in user one, please press star six to unmute yourself. Call-in user one, please press star six to unmute yourself. We'll try coming back to you. Megan, please go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, council. My name is Megan Davis and I live in Bayside. My children attend Jacoby Creek School and I also attended Jacoby Creek School from kindergarten through eighth grade. I am concerned for the safety of the children at the school, not only because of the toxicity of the Roger's Garage site, but also because of traffic congestion, which is a serious problem in the area and has not been addressed properly. I'm worried that building a unit of this size will put further strain on parking near Jacoby Creek School, especially during events during the day and in the evening when families are forced to park very far up theater streets like Highland and Golf Course Road. The lack of streetlights make it a dangerous environment for children and I am very worried about the situation worsening more if parking becomes even more scarce. The lack of a bus going out to Bayside is another concern of mine. The nearest stop is in Sunny Bray, which is a mile walk each way from the proposed site. Also, the closest grocery store is also nearly a mile each way, and that seems a long way to walk with heavy groceries if you are expecting people to walk instead of drive. The grocery, the Roger's Garage site does not seem to have the proper infrastructure to accommodate a building of this size. I really want to emphasize that I am not opposed to affordable housing being built in Bayside, but this site in particular is extremely worrisome to me due to the potential for toxins- for toxins harming children at the school and for traffic safety both during and after construction. I hope a more suitable spot in Bayside can be found that will not put our children at risk and that can better serve the residents of the proposed building. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next Zoom speaker, please.
I'm going to try having call-in user one speak again. Yeah. Call-in user one, please go ahead. Call-in user one, please press star six to unmute yourself. Okay.
Possibly they walked away from there.
Genevieve, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Genevieve Serna. I am a homeowner and resident here in the City of Arcata, and I was just chiming in to add in my support for this affordable housing project out in Bayside. It's no mystery that the City of Arcata has long been in a crunch for affordable housing and that this problem has created, you know, untold complications for the working people living here in the City of Arcata. Presently, there is only one home for sale in the neighborhood of Bayside, a four-bedroom ranch-style home that's being sold for $800,000, which is a ridiculous amount to try and justify a working family with children to try and shell out for the privilege of having their children go to a good school or live in a good neighborhood. It's been mentioned that there's a million-dollar funding gap that's being covered by the city for this project, and I find it a little bit more offensive that we would ask working family to pay almost a million dollars to have their family live in this neighborhood. So I would really love to see this thing get built. I understand that this site is a site of, that's going to need environmental remediation, you know? And I have faith that the people carrying out this work, if this is their profession, their career, that they will do so in a manner that is safe. There are thousands of sites across the state of California that have undergone similar remediation and, you know, where the sky hasn't fallen quite yet. But where we are seeing the sky fall and where we're all seeing people suffer is the lack of affordable housing in our city and others. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next Zoom speaker, please.
Yes, Naomi, please go ahead.
Thank you.
Naomi, please unmute yourself. Naomi, please unmute yourself. Okay, I'm not hearing a response. It's okay if I go on to the next speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I didn't know how all these buttons on this thing work. I was going back to the Sister City issue. I just wanted to...
Wait, Naomi, this, we're talking about Rogers Garage.
Yeah, so I don't even, I didn't think I had my hand raised. I thought it was down. I'm sorry.
So your time will come. We have a few other agenda items, and then we'll be at oral communication. So thank you.
Okay, so I still have just the hand raised for the call-in user. I am pressing allow to talk, which should prompt them to be unmuted. If you can hear me, call-in user, please go ahead.
I think we'll have to skip that because there seems to be a difficulty with transmission, or whatever word you want to use. So we have anyone else on Zoom? That's it? Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the council, and we will make no decisions. We're going to be, we could take it back. And would you like, Community Development Director, would you just like to reiterate what you said before in very simple ways so people understand what's happening?
Yeah, no actions required. We'll notice a new hearing, and in intervening time, we'll reach out and have a town hall with the community.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming this evening. We really appreciate having you come and speak, and I know it takes time out of your lives, and we definitely understand that, and we appreciate it. So with that, I would like to take a quick break because I would like Councilmember Atkins Salazar to rejoin us, and maybe we all want to stretch our legs for a moment. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to welcome you all back to the meeting, and so thank you, and thank you, the council, for that break. It was nice to have a few minutes off. And so we're going to go into new business, and our first is a public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance number 245, I'm sorry, resolution number 245-56, confirming the report of 2024 Lean Letter recipients of delinquent garbage account fees. So maybe we have a staff report, please?
Sure. Good evening, council and community members. So this agenda item before you is not the most exciting, but it is routine. And it comes before you every year right around this time of year. For some background to refamiliarize, the city's franchise hauler, Recology, provides our curbside collection of solid waste, and all property owners are required to have solid waste service and are responsible for paying their solid waste bills. Those who don't become delinquent, and Recology, our hauler, notifies them a number of times to bring their outstanding bills current. Those that don't pay over a matter of time last calendar year end up being placed on what we, in the shorthand, call the lean list. And what it means is that the outstanding balances go to the property bill for that year. And so this list before you is effectively the council certifying that this list can move forward and be recorded with the various property bills. Between now and the end of July, any property owners who have an outstanding balance, who are on this list, can pay their balance with Recology, be removed from the list. And so there is a little bit more of a grace period, and then after that July deadline, those that haven't been paid will move forward to be recorded with property tax bills. So that is the matter before you here tonight. As I mentioned, it's pretty routine. We have not gotten very many calls at all, and so I would recommend that the council adopt the resolution to add these amounts to the various property bills should the time come to pass at the end of July.
Well, thank you. So at this time, I would like to conduct a public hearing to hear objections or protests from landowners listed on the report of the 2024 Lean Letter recipient delinquent garbage account fees. They're just numbers, so you don't know whose name is actually there. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Nobody is on Zoom.
Okay. Well, I do, I do have a question.
You have a question?
No, I was going to make a motion to adopt resolution number...
Well, you can, I can ask the question then.
245-56, confirming the report of 2024 Lean Letter recipients of delinquent garbage account fees.
I will second.
Okay, so I'm going to ask my question. If there are any other questions, you can go before me. None, okay. So you're saying what happens if there is a, if you have an apartment, if you have different people in a building and they pay their own garbage, and they don't pay it, then the property owner who has the property pays it? Okay.
Yeah, yep, that's ultimately correct. And, and so if there was a landowner who had their tenants subscribed in solid waste service and they weren't paying their bills, initially, the tenants, the account holders, would get the first couple of delinquent notices, and then if they're still not being paid, then those notices go to the property owner because the Arcata municipal code holds property owners ultimately responsible for paying the solid waste collection bills.
Okay, so with that, if there's no one here, we can close the public hearing. We have any, do we want to make any revisions or corrections to the report? If not, we can adopt the ordinance. Would you like to proceed?
We made a motion in a second, so all we have to do is...
Okay. All those, well, I had to ask my question because I can't figure out how to solve it. Anyway, all those in favor, sign or say no.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor Stillman, I heard everybody say aye. I just didn't catch, I didn't hear you say aye or no, and I just wanted to double-check your vote.
I said aye.
Thank you.
We all, there were five ayes. Or anyway, I heard five.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to our next item, which is a public hearing to consider the adoption of resolution number 245-55, authorizing application for community development block grant program income for business assistance microenterprise programs not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, quote-unquote, CEQA. May we please have a staff report?
Yeah, just briefly, what this action item will do is to authorize the city to apply for local CDBG program income, to add it to an existing open grant that closes about middle of next year for business assistance loans and microenterprise loans. We've had a lot of interest in the program and are near using all of the funds that are in the grant, and so this will supplement the grant and allow us to make a couple of additional loans. This is a public hearing, so we'd request that you open the public hearing, take public comment, and after closing the public hearing, adopt resolution 245-55.
Thank you. With that, I would like to open the public hearing, and anyone, please come forward and speak. Thank you.
Since we just had a discussion about CEQA with this Rogers Garage issue, and we're talking about grant monies for business assistance and microenterprise programs, what examples would these be that are not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act is kind of my question? Because we were trying to get an exemption from that on a toxic site in Bayside from not subject to CEQA. So I'm just, it's all so vague to me right now, and I want to support business assistance, and I want to support microenterprise. It's just not subject to... It it's just not subject to, if it's not subject to Ca- California Environmental Quality Act, is that because it doesn't have anything to do with the quality of the environment of the business or the um micro enterprise? Question mark, big?
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
On this item, yeah.
Yes, on this item of the community development block grant. Thank you. Okay, anyone on Zoom, please?
Nobody is on Zoom.
All right, we'll bring it, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll bring it back to the council. Are there questions on this item, please?
Go ahead.
Um, I was just curious. I noticed in the background, it says the program may provide fund loans up to three hundred thousand.
That was my question.
But we're only doing two. Can we beef it up a little bit? I feel like if we added another hundred thousand, the loans itself after we have activity um delivery and general admin fees, it's a hundred and sixty, whereas if we can add another hundred thousand, instead of serving two to seven, we could increase it by another third. So whatever that math is. You know, maybe we could possibly do, you know, ten, twelve people to get those loans.
Um, yeah, the council certainly could increase the dollar amount if they wish to. Um, we are recommending two hundred thousand because that's how much we think that we can use in the time that's left on the grant. Um, that's why that number was selected. We still have about a hundred and twenty thousand in the uh grant itself. And so this would put us at about, you know, um somewhere between, you know, two to four loans, depending on the types that came in. Um, and based on the uh interest that we've had, we think that's about all we can spend.
Yeah, and I think that you explained it to me when we were talking, but can you just explain it one more time? What happens if we do um, you know, have three thou- three hundred thousand, but we don't use it? Can you, can you explain to me like why that's bad?
Yeah, it just um, if we over budget for the um PI contribution to grants and the grant closes and we haven't spent that money, um then we would potentially have to either give it back to the state. Um, or uh, you know, the other um, uh, you know, possible outcome is that that money then comes back in the form of program income, which would affect our ability to use other grant funds. Uh, because program income has to get spent first uh before you draw on grant funds. So we're really trying to tar- I'm sorry, we're, we're, we're just really trying to target the amount that we think that we're actually going to be able to spend. Um, and theoretically, if we, you know, get a big run on, on business loans, um, we can come back and get authorization to apply for additional.
Great. And what's the period that it ends at?
Uh, our expenditure deadline is March, roughly March of next year.
Okay.
Um, ju- just to clarify for the question that was asked earlier, um, if you look at page sixty-one of the agenda, it says applying for a grant is not a project pursuant to CEQA, so we're just applying for money, so that doesn't need review. No specific projects have been identified. Any business loans funded through the program are independently evaluated for environmental review. So it's not CEQA because we're asking for money. This doesn't mean that whatever businesses apply wouldn't go through CEQA.
So my question um was, is this for only new loans or can it be for expansion? And then she asked the question of how long, but um I'm wondering if we could promote it a little more than what we have and letting people know that we have these opportunities.
Um, so the uh, in terms of promoting it, I mean, we, we do a, you know, we do a fair amount of promotion. Certainly, we could always promote it more and we're always balancing those workloads. Um, but happy to try and get the word out there. Um, and the um, I'm sorry, what was the first question?
New loans only or can we do expanding businesses to like, you know, create more jobs?
Yeah, it, it can be used for new businesses or expansion of existing businesses. The business assistance part is generally comes with a job creation. So for every uh job that's created, you can borrow up to thirty-five thousand dollars. And then for the micro enterprise, those are really small businesses, generally um uh fewer than five people, including the business owner. Um, and those have uh, you know, people can apply for a grant of up to ten thousand dollars um or a business loan for up to fifty thousand dollars. Um, so those are um kind of two separate programs. That one doesn't have a job creation requirement. Uh, and more often than not, we're seeing um micro enterprise on new the business ventures. Uh, whereas business loans are on existing businesses that are looking to expand typically.
Just to clarify, so they're two separate programs, but they both come under this umbrella? So we could give a lot more ten thousand dollar grants that do not need to be paid back for businesses that might be struggling or maybe need to buy a new, you know, I don't know, reach-in refrigerator or something?
Yeah, the grants are really uh restrictive and and are designed to uh try and build capacity. Um, so it's, it's not like, you know, come one, come all, come get a grant. Um, there are very limited circumstances where, where grants are authorized. Um, the majority of the program is really looking at um, uh, you know, business loans, whether it's through the micro enterprise or the business loan program.
Okay, but they're both, that money can be spent on either.
Either one.
Is anyone else interested in increasing that limit from two to three?
Well, you know, what I would say is if somebody comes in and they're asking for additional funds than what we have allocated, that's an opportunity to come and ask us about changing that program. Is that correct? If, let's say, as Kimberly is saying, she, she thinks someone should maybe want three hundred thousand instead of two hundred thousand. Is that a possibility or is it only now it has to be two hundred thousand because the council approved it at that level?
We would have to come back and get authorization again. Um, but I, I wanted to, you know, just reiterate that we'd have about three hundred thousand dollars in the program with the allocation of this one sixty. Um, so I, you know, I, it's, it's always a little bit of voodoo trying to guess what's going to happen in the future. Um, but based on, you know, our, you know, the projects that we know are in the hopper right now and the level of interest that we've had, I think that, you know, we'll be able to spend this amount. I doubt we'll be able to spend much more. But again, if the council wants to, you know, add another hundred thousand to the program, that would be great too.
But if there is interest, we can always come back and reapply and ask.
Absolutely, yeah. If I get four new business loans tomorrow and you'll, you'll see me next month with the exact same.
There's your chance.
Wouldn't that be exciting?
That would be really exciting.
Exactly.
So thank you very much for that. And so we would need to have a motion to adopt resolution number two, four, five dash fifty five. Authorizing, can, can whoever want, who does?
I will make a motion to adopt resolution number two, four, five dash five, five, authorizing application for community development block grant program income for business assistance and micro enterprise programs.
I'll second.
Not subject to CEQA.
Okay, this, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So we'll go on to our next item on the agenda. I'm sorry. Did someone say something? Oh, thank you, from the council, David. Okay, I'm going to go on to item C, which is public hearing to consider establishing the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six appropriations limit, GAN and limit and revising. Are your fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five appropriations limit. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing and receive a staff report, please.
Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor, Tabitha Miller, finance director. Um, so our first um order of business tonight is pretty simple, but it is something that is required each year um as we adopt our budget as part of that process. Get my paper here, excuse me. Okay, um, so back in nineteen seventy-nine, about eighteen months after Prop thirteen was adopted, um, came along the appropriation or the GAN limit. And basically, this was considered um in the spirit of thirteen, Prop thirteen, um, and it's named after um GAN, who actually put it forth back then. And basically, it was just another um effort to sort of limit increases in taxes and government spending back in the late seventies. It has been modified a couple of times by Prop ninety-eight and Prop one eleven. Um, but basically what it requires is that the state and each local government has to establish their appropriation limit annually. Typically, it's done right before your budget and sets that standard um in place. For the most part, um, the, the revenues that are subject to your GAN or your appropriation limit are tax revenues. Um, so it is limited and it's mostly general fund. So we're going to dive right in and take a look at the, um, we are revising the twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, this is because when I went to look at the previous year, I discovered that there was a typo in the resolution. The calculations were correct, but the resolution was wrong, but it, so we're going to readopt it so that it's correct. And the biggest reason for that is that your appropriation limit builds on your prior year every year. So it's important to start with a correct balance. Um, really quickly to walk through this, um, the first number at the top, number A, the nineteen million nine hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars was the appropriation limit for twenty year, for the year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, it is adjusted by two factors. One is the price factor that happens to be the California growth um in per capita income, so it typically runs higher than your normal inflation or CPI numbers. And then your population factor. And you can see here in between twenty-three and twenty-four, the population in Arcata and all of Humboldt County actually went down, so you actually lose a little bit of money. Um, you multiply that by your previous base, the difference is your increase. Our new increase was twenty million three hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and twelve dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And again, we're going to readopt that this evening. The appropriations subject to it were only fourteen million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and six dollars, which means that you have a pretty good buffer between hitting your limit of um almost five point nine million dollars for the current fiscal year. Um, looking forward to our budget year for twenty-five, twenty-six, again, this number is exactly what we just calculated, the twenty million three hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and twelve. Our price factor, we had a pretty good increase in that per capita income in California, so it's um more than almost six and a half percent. Arcata also had a small population increase. We were the only city in Humboldt County to do that, which gives us um about an eight point two percent increase in our um GAN limit um for the upcoming year, about one point six seven million dollars. Our new number is twenty-two million nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And you can see that the revenues um have gone up. Most of the reason for that is because of the passage of the new TUT tax, measure H. Um, but we still, our revenues are still, um, we still have a buffer in that of about four point seven million dollars. So we're still well below the cap on your appropriation GAN limit. I just thought it would be interesting to show you the numbers for population for this last year that are used to calculate the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six um limit. And you can see again, we were the only entity that had a population change. It was only one point six six percent, but it was positive and it did give us a little bit more of an increase. And overall, um, the county was, was um point oh five percent less than the prior year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions before you take public comment.
Does the council have any questions on this? Before public comment?
Thank you.
Okay, then we will um ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come up and speak on this during public hearing? Anyone like to speak on this item? All right, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, there, there's nobody on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Did you wish to speak, sir?
I just want to ask a question. Uh, with like the new housing development, a thousand units, is that counted as part of the city of Arcata? Because I hear of the, the, we didn't vote it in and it's like federal and then we don't get taxes off of those units. So are they part of the city?
Are you asking, are you asking?
I'm asking somebody.
Are you asking about Bayside?
Yeah, the new thing here, no, no, no. You're across the street from HSU.
Oh, you're talking about the new dorms?
Yeah, are those people part of the GAN? Like when those thousand units come online, are they part of GAN?
How do you want to?
First of all, we don't want to get into question and answer, but through the chair, so it only depends on the actual population and, and those aren't occupied yet. If you did want to have the answer to that question, so it depends on the actual population, not.
So our population, according to this docu-
But again, I urge you to refrain from answering questions, just.
I was just going to mention my question. Thank you. I thought it was interesting that we saw a population gain in Arcata. And then we noted how there were other areas that were not lost much, but you know, in some cases forty-seven people, you know, two people, and that we actually have a gain of three hundred and ten. So that's, that's quite, if, do I have that information correct?
You do, and it is a positive.
That's how we figure out, um, the, all the information is figured out on the population. Is that correct?
The population and then the increase in the California state per capita income growth.
Okay.
Those, those two are, are factored together.
So Sarah, do you have a question? Would you like to?
No, I was gonna make a motion to adopt resolution number two, four, five dash five, two, establishing the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six appropriation limits and adopt resolution two, four, five dash five, four, revising the twenty-four, twenty-five appropriations limit.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any questions on the um motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
And we'll be going on to our next item, which is the public hearing to adopt resolution number two, four, five dash five, three, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget. And with that, I would like to open the public hearing and then receive a staff report, please.
Thank you. So we'll get started here. Um, I just wanted to do a little bit of recap before we get too far into this presentation and remind you that I'm going to do an overview tonight and we're not going to get too far in the, into the details of the budget because you did have three bu- budget study sessions over the last couple of months. You met on April ninth, May eighth, and May fourteenth. So we've gone through quite a bit of this information in detail. Um, but I do want to provide enough information that it's an overview for the public. Um, the other thing I wanted to remind you is that municipal code twenty-three oh five does require that the city adopt its budget before July first. And just kind of to tell you that this is your budget, this is the city council's budget. So um if you do have changes that you need to make tonight, that is acceptable, or if you have questions. So I want to make sure you are happy with um what you're, we're presenting and you're adopt, hopefully adopting this evening. The other thing is that um this information is available um online, all of the details, funds, the, the details that we'll go through um on the city's website in the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six online budget. We've also updated that transparency portal, which provides you financial information and you'll see that information there too. So if anybody wants to dive deeper into anything we talk about tonight, that information is available. Um, there are a few things in addition to just the revenue and expense estimates that you're adopting as part of the budget tonight. Um, your city goals, objectives, and priority projects are included in that budget, as is the budget process policies. Um, the capital improvement program, CIP, both the projects and the budget for those projects. And then you're also authorizing staff positions and you're adopting their estimated salaries and benefit costs as part of the budget. Um, really quickly, these are your sort of headers for the city goals, and I just kind of wanted to remind everybody it's facilities and infrastructure, environmental leadership, economic development, public service, resident and community health, and prepare for the future, for future needs. And within each of these goals, you have very, more specific goals that wrap up to try to make sure that we can meet the overall goal of city council. Um, you also have city council priority projects that we went, we, we spent one whole um work session on. And again, these are just the headers and within those, um, there are more specific detailed priority projects to meet both the, the project goal, but also your um city council goals. You know, we've got the coordinated regional homelessness reduction strategy framework, identifying initial priority benchmarks to provide or continue to shelter those who or may um become homeless. We've got a list of Valley West improvements to meet that goal. Um, we also want to look for opportunities to collaborate with Humboldt County and local jurisdictions, nonprofits to increase mental health and social services. We've got many um specific items related to public safety goals and projects uh to continue to grow the government relationships with your local tribal governments, economic development strategies. Um, we've added quite a few of those this year, um prioritizing future planning, climate change and climate adaptation, um implementing the Arcata Art Strategic Plan by working with the existing art efforts and established in the community. Um, our parks improvements, safe streets, um continuing to maintain. continuing to maintain our strong partnership with Cal Poly Humboldt, and then exploring the support for Spanish translation of city council meetings. And then finally, diversity, equity, and inclusion are on your list. So the numbers on the left here are really sort of the six most important numbers that I think when you're looking at your budget, it kind of gives you a good overview of where you stand and what this next year will look like. So first number is your total budget is $110.7 million. As a comparison, this number last year was 87.6 million. So you've got a $23.1 million increase. The next item, the total capital is really the driver of that. It's been the driver of your budget for five years. It's been, you know, a huge number. So it's $60.6 million this year. It was $44.7 million last year. I will tell you the total capital and your total CIP or capital improvement program numbers are slightly different when we talk about those later. Your total payroll and benefits was, is 20, is going to be 21.3 million. Last year it was 20.8, so it's got a 2.4% increase. Your inner city payments are almost the same. They're 5.1 million last year, 5 million this year. Full-time employees, you have 133, plus we consider city council all full-time, even though you don't count your hours on a time sheet, we do consider it full-time. That is a net increase of three positions. You added three positions at mid-year. We eliminated one at the end of last year, which was the transit administrative position. And then in this budget, in the new year, you are authorizing one new position for a maintenance worker for utility and streets. And then finally, your general fund budget, which is important because that's the fund that pays for much of the primary programs. It's the most flexible, flexible budget and also the most competitive. Our budget this year will be 24.7 million. Last year it was 24.4 million, which is a $1.2 or $300,000 increase from the prior year. Couple other things I wanted to point out is that there.
I'm sorry, it looks like there's a negative sign in front of that, is that?
No, it's a dash. It's a bad dash, sorry. It, it didn't end up in the right place. Thank you for pointing that out so we could clarify that. But there are, talking about negative, which is a good segue, there are a couple places where we are budgeting to use fund balance or fund reserves. And I think it's important to point this out because it's not something that we want to do every year, but there are times that it's appropriate and, and certainly times that you've saved money for it. Two examples of that are your between the water and wastewater utility funds will use a total of about $14.4 million from reserves. In both of these cases, they are going to fund capital projects and you have been saving rate revenue for a number of years to pay for those projects. In addition to that, I will remind you that we have approved a $3.5 million loan from the wastewater fund to the water fund to fund the steel water pipeline project to try to mitigate any rate impacts of that project going on. In addition, in addition, we are budgeting $757,000 of general fund monies. And again, you are in good shape with your general fund reserves. You have currently at the end of this year, including the use of those full reserves, we estimate that you'll have 78% of your operating and annual operating expenses. That's equal to about 288 days of operations. That number was a little higher last year. It was 299 days. But again, your policy only requires 30%, which is about 3.6 months. So you're well above your reserves, even if you spend all of that money. The other piece I would talk about here is that it is one-time reserves. So it's projects, we're spending it on one-time projects, so it doesn't become part of your ongoing operating balance or budget. This is a pretty good list, but this is still only selected projects that I wanted to make sure that the public and the council was reminded are included in this year's budget. Completion of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, renovating the Redwood Park Basketball Court, park improvements at Carlson Park. If you remember, we had a little bit of extra money left over and it's going to be reinvested in those facilities. We've got citywide encampment and illegal dumping cleanup. We've got $50,000 for that budgeted. We've also budgeted $50,000 for the nuisance abatement program. We have included that flash boat for pulling in the budget. Completion of the water and wastewater rate study so that we can make sure that those funds are properly accounted for. Sale of the Alder Grove Industrial Park parcels, the two that are vacant and still owned by the city. Planning and programming for the Valley West Community Center should also be completed this year. We've got two over-hire police officers budgeted and a little bit of an overlap for your lieutenant in replacing that position. And then Measure H is supporting parks, alternative transportation, public safety, emergency response parks and other facilities and maintenance improvements. So that's another add to the budget this year. As always, I know that this is quite a bit of, of numbers, but I think it's important because it's all your funds. And if you go to the right-hand side, you can see the 2026 budget. It's that $110 million we just talked about. Obviously, I've highlighted capital outlay for all years. We've, this has been a theme since I've been here and before, which is we continue to spend more than 50% or budget more than 50% of your annual budget for capital improvements. And those infrastructure investments are parks, transportation, and, and certainly your water and wastewater utilities. And that, that is really a huge number. When you're spending more than, you know, when you're budgeting and spending 40 to 50% of your total expenses on an annual basis, it, it's, it's certainly looking forward. And when we talk about planning for the future and investing in the future, the city council is making a huge contribution to your ongoing operations and things that will, will, we will benefit as citizens 10, 20 years from now are being funded here. So I just kind of wanted to make sure that we were aware of that. I have put the operating budget in green down below, so I've basically pulled out that capital outlay. Your operating budget is kind of an important number to sort of pay attention to because that's what's going to be sort of ongoing. It's your regular operations, it's the budget that continues every year. And it's the one that if and when we got to any sort of financial issue or we ran into revenue shortfalls or anything like that, that would be the one we would focus on trying to maintain. So it's there just to kind of give you a, a reminder. And as you can see, it's only about 45% of your total budget for fiscal year 2025, 26. Something else I want to point out and I'll talk a little bit more about in a slide or two is we do have a tendency to budget with a lot of enthusiasm and commitment, but we don't always get all the projects done and sometimes they move to the next year. And you can see that when you look at the budget for 23, you know, we were more than $20 million less is what we actually spent. And there was a similar outcome if you look at fiscal year 24 with the budget to actual. And we will be below our budget for 2025 too, so.
Could I ask a quick question about the capital outlay? And just how do we compare with other jurisdictions, being that we are over 50%?
It, you are, you are higher, especially given the fact that this is not just a one-time project, that you've got five years at that. It's, it's more than anywhere I've ever worked. And I felt like I worked for cities that did a pretty good job of reinvesting in their infrastructure, but it's extraordinary. And even when you compare it to previous budgets of the city, it's extraordinary. If you go back to 20, like 2021 and 1920 and 2021, which part of that was the pandemic, we were spending a couple million dollars a year. And now you're spending $60 million a year or planning to spend. So it is extraordinary. And you can see that this is just another version of that. And you can see that that long dark blue line is your capital and it far outweighs all of your other expenses put together and you can really kind of see the impact. You can also see that your core operating expenses don't fluctuate anywhere near as much as that capital number. I will point out the two, the purple number happens to be debt service. And in 2024, we made that contribution to Calpers and that's the reason that that jumped up so much. So I'm switching, I'm narrowing down to your general fund. And again, the, the general fund, this is still big picture, but it is important because this is where many of your programs are paid for and where you have the greatest flexibility. You'll also notice again, we talked about those deficit budgets. We have, for the most part, almost every year, at least for the last five years, budgeted that you would take money out of reserves or out of fund balance to fund all of the programs that you have requested. But I really wanted to point out what those actual numbers have come in at because it gives you kind of that perspective of our, you know, being overly ambitious. And you can see in the actual here, you know, it went positive. We budgeted for a negative in 23, it was actually a positive. We budgeted a fairly large one in 24, it was only $400,000 negative. And even what we're estimating for 25 is going to be a positive as opposed to the negative that you budgeted. And the graph below just kind of shows you the difference between the, the revenues in blue and the expenses in orange there. But this probably provides you a little bit better kind of idea of that true-up and sort of the consistency that happens there. So in 2022, you can see again, we budgeted for a negative 0.7. We actually ended up $2.5 million to the good, which is a $3.2 million difference, a positive difference. We had the exact different numbers, but we had the exact same difference in 2023. When you look at what we thought was going to be the negative, we made that up plus added $1.8 million. We were at 3.1 total to the good in 2024. We're looking at, we're estimating $3.5 million in 2025. And then again, we've got that, you know, $757,000 that we're projecting out for this next budget year. But again, it's part of the reason I'm not, you know, we can spend it. If we spend it, we're still good, but if we follow suit and we come in under budget, that's obviously a positive and, and I feel pretty confident that we're in a good spot. I am not going to read all these to you, but you have 31 special revenue funds. Your special revenue funds are really important because this is the source of much of that grant money, state subvention money. It's the money that we basically comes in and isn't necessarily generated by the local taxes. And so it funds quite a few programs and it was the CDBG money that David was talking about earlier. And so I wanted to kind of highlight, oops, let me go back one. Highlight it because this is another year where you've got a significantly higher than normal number. You've got a $36.9 million budget in all of your special revenue funds. The last two years, the last two budget years, it's been 18 million, so you've doubled it. Again, it's that capital outlay. That $24.1 million is primarily transportation projects. It's going to be the US 101 Sunset Interchange Project. And there is $3 million in that number that is for our reconnecting Arcata project. Unfortunately, we didn't, it doesn't look like we're getting funding this current budget year, so we will probably move that out of your budget. And we'll have to see what happens with that project going forward, so that may be a little bit less.
So we will get the funding though, it's just.
I, I don't know that, I can't say that. I, it, we aren't getting it, we aren't getting it this year. And I think we'll have to see what happens in future years, but it, we have not been told we're not getting it.
So I feel like I'm out of the loop because this is the first.
This is brand new within the last few days.
Okay.
Yeah, which is why I'm mentioning it. And it, it was, it's brand new enough that I didn't take it out of the budget because we were that far into the process.
And you'll keep us updated on that, of course.
We will, yeah. Your Water Enterprise Fund, again, you've got an $18.3 million budget for fiscal year 2526. 11.5 million of that is capital outlay. It's about 63% of the total. In your special revenue fund, we just looked at it, it was about 65%. But again, that's your steel water line project, your Plunkett Water Line Project and Tank 4 Rehab is included in that number. Your debt service and your water fund is so small, I could not fit the 0.1 number into the little narrow strip there. And your wastewater fund, you're at $25 million for next year. Your capital outlay is 72% of the total. And that 17.9 million is the final year of the wastewater treatment plant project, which is about 11.5 million. It's also your court, your, your same project, your steel water line project on the sewer side, which is your infiltration, infill and infiltration replacement of those lines. So again, making big improvements in your utilities going forward. Just finally, one of the last slides, your capital improvement program, $62.6 million. And I wanted to highlight a few of the projects that you might not know about. We've got the EPA Brownfields Cleanup at Little Lakes Industrials Mill Site, $475,000. We've got improvements for the Happy Valley Potential Industrial Park. We've got bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Samoa Volabard. We've also got citywide bicycle and pedestrian improvements. We've got construction of the Annie and Mary Trail scheduled for this next year. The US 101 and Sunset Avenue Interchange that we've already talked about and that's special revenue funds. Steel water line replacement, your sewer inflow and infiltration reduction. And then of course, the wastewater treatment configuration completed in construction that we talked about already. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, um, would you like to, let's invite the public to speak on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. And Tabitha, you do a great job, it seems. Wrapping my head around all this is difficult, but the special revenue funds, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a reality of people like me in, who live in Arcata. Apparently, I don't know if it's the Affordable Housing Act or whatever, but I have benefited gratefully from the tenant-based rental assistance program for the last year. And it was apparently a bridge grant that was acquired by the city from, I think, the federal government to allow people like me to afford to live in current housing that's not necessarily Section 8 housing or designated affordable housing places like Sorrel Place or Plaza Point. But that money is ending at the end of this July. And so the reality is they applied for a new grant, but with the federal government oftentimes deciding not to fund things, that won't be happening, probably, I've been told. And so I just signed a new lease for the place I'm living that I'm going to have to pay twice what I was paying and it'll be over half my income. So I just want to give, when we're trying to keep people from getting homeless, I'm going to really work really hard at, at making do with this. And I'm not alone in the challenge. But I just want to say this out loud, that we're budgeting for a lot of things, but some of the things are not being budgeted anymore because we're not getting the money in the special revenue grants is my understanding. So we got to kind of look, mix it all together and connect it all together and realize that if we want to deal with homelessness, we got to deal with keeping people like me in a safe place to live. You know, I can do it, but other people might have more challenges than I. But it, it's a reality that you need to hear out loud in this room at this time, at this podium.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
I do see one hand raised. Naomi, are you raising your hand to public on the, the proposed budget? Naomi, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I didn't raise my hand. The, the, there's this icon down here that says I have my hand lowered. So I don't know what's going on with this thing.
Okay, thank you for letting us know.
Okay. Okay, then we have no one on Zoom. And so let's come back to the council. And Sarah, would you like to start this evening?
I have my microphone on. I'm sorry. I have my microphone on. Okay. I just want to, I think that this, the three study sessions were a wonderful way to kind of dig deep into each of these facets of the budget and get a really great understanding. So I feel really comfortable with this budget. I do want to thank Arcata for voting for Measure H so we can continue all of these much-needed projects. And I'm glad that we are going to be tracking them and so, and thank you, as always, for the very clear, concise presentation.
Okay, well then we'll go to Kimberly.
So you said if we had a change, the time is now.
Yes, it is.
Don't want to mess up everybody's budget, but I also have been really concerned about the tenant-based bridge housing with the highest rate of people becoming unhoused now. It's the seniors and we have a lot of folks getting this supplement out at Lazy J Senior Mobile Home Park. And I'm just wondering, what is? And I'm just wondering, what is the plan? What are we going to do? How do we be proactive and not have this, the new set of unhoused individuals? Is there, yeah, I guess I should stop and breathe and let you try to answer that question.
So I, I don't know that I can answer all of that. The, the funding has gone away, and we've, we've talked about this through the budget process. It was the home program. We have applied for additional, but all of the communications that are not necessarily direct to the city but are out there for everybody to see have said that the home program is being eliminated at the federal level.
So what's our backup plan? Are we going to just let it, I mean, not to sound all dramatic, but yes, please. Thank you.
Yeah, so we, I'm afraid this isn't the news that you want to hear. But, but we had the homelessness and housing meeting today. And one of the things that was, that Darlene from Arcata House Partnership told us is that right now nationwide, there are 19,000 people a week going homeless. And so that, and what she was saying is the, like, that these kind of programs are what are keeping people in house. But the reason, the reason that these numbers are up so high is because all of these programs are going away. So there is no way that any city or small community can absorb that. This is a problem that is far above us. Like people, we have to be reaching out to those in higher places to get these funding, the funding back. This is like the home program. That's just one, one program. There's lots of cuts happening. And so, yes, there's a whole population of, and what Darlene was saying today is of those 19,000 people, those are mostly new homeless folks, people that have been housed, that are seniors, that are subsidized, that are becoming unhoused. So this is, we, we have to, as a, as a group, everybody has to be screaming about this to those above us. This isn't, we, we don't have a backup plan and we cannot.
Is there any way that we have like a discretionary fund where we can just do those who are at the highest risk, not trying to fill the entire status quo that we have?
Well, what, I just want to interject one thing, too, is that some people were paying rent, whatever their rent was, and then they got the rent subsidy. And what I always hoped is they were saving their money, that they didn't, weren't paying in rent, and that they were able to put it aside. So when they, when the programs go away.
That's, that's, that's for those who have the privilege to do that.
When 50% of your income is going to housing, you're housing burdened. It's not possible to save.
Exactly.
Like, you're out of touch with how expensive things are. That's insane to say. So I, I, I don't have great answers for. You're not rent burdened. Like, you don't get it. You, you don't get it. And that is a really insensitive comment to make. Like, you don't get it because you haven't lived that circumstance. And when 50% of your income is going to rent, and then you have to buy food, and you have to pay rising utility rates when PG&E is more expensive than it's ever been, and the cost of internet, now you have to have a cell phone to be able to make it in this, like every, each of, every one of those things adds up to far beyond that other 50%. And like Stacy said, 19,000 people per week in this country are going homeless because our federal government has cut dramatic funding to welfare, to healthcare. Like, that's things that you, I know you support that. And so like, to say that is just so shocking.
I don't know, you want to get into an argument? I don't want to get into an argument.
No, I just, it's, that's not what people, that's not practical to tell people that they should have been saving that money because it's not the reality that people live.
I hope some people have thought about that.
So, and then something that I, that I left out, because we need to know this, the cuts that are coming to possibly to Medicare and Medicaid, that is, that is, that is not, that is going to compound this so very badly, very badly.
Well, thank you for being the bearer of bad news.
It is bad news.
And, and with that, I, I don't have, I don't have great answers. And there isn't a discretionary fund out there. That said, this is, and, and creating a new program is something that we need to put some thought into and who those people would be and how we would administer it because there aren't templates for us to work with because they don't exist anymore. But that is something that we can certainly bring back to the council. And obviously, this is, the home program is just a small piece of a much bigger pie that we are not going to be able to solve as an individual city. But I'm happy to certainly, you know, have that conversation. Something else I should say that's kind of important is, yes, you can change your budget tonight, but you can also change it after the first of July, we can come back. And it doesn't have to be, we've talked about it even with the reconnecting Arcata and some of the other programs, that we don't have any idea where we're at, that we may be back to you earlier than mid-year to address those things or to at least let you know what's happening. So that, that would be the suggestion, would be that if this is something that the council wants to take on, that we actually have a special meeting where we talk about that specifically.
I'm happy to hear not everything's cut and stone. Thank you. I can sleep tonight a little.
Okay, are there any other comments?
Yeah. And I'm already worked about housing, so I'm going to remain calm on this one. But I think it is the appropriate time to bring it up just because, again, we've had repeated public commentators that have talked about divestment. And we've talked tonight about, you know, these massive payments that we make to CalPERS. And obviously, I understand the rationale behind that and that we need to have people obviously get their retirements that they've been paying into. But to look at this as an opportunity and to kind of just bring to my other council members this opportunity for advocacy, as we've again had a lot of folks call in that we should divest CalPERS investments that are funding genocide in Gaza right now. However, it's, if that is not enough to sway you, there is so many more reasons to divest from companies like Raytheon and Lockheed Martin and Boeing because they are the ones that are building the weapons and building the planes that are currently bombing Iran, that are currently being deployed in downtown Los Angeles, right? Like, our government works to run the military industrial complex. And so I just, if you also want to talk about divesting from fossil fuels, those things go hand in hand because war kills the environment. And if it's not enough to want to divest for, for one conflict that's taking place in Palestine, you should want to divest for all of the things that the military industrial complex does that ruins our lives. And these companies are evil. And, you know, I think that CalPERS have had, has had a lot of opportunities where advocacy has caused change. CalPERS used to invest in Smith &amp; Wesson. And after the Sandy Hook shooting, they divested from all companies that make firearms, that make guns specifically, right? Like, there, the conversation around divesting from fossil fuel companies has been brought to CalPERS and is like being worked through as something that people want. And so this opportunity to continue that advocacy and have CalPERS divest from companies that are weapons manufacturers and that are causing war globally, I think is really something to think about. And whether that's individually, sending letters to CalPERS, calling for that as a council, sending a letter to call for that. But I think that we need to kind of reframe that conversation and recognizing that like our own military is being deployed against us also. And that it is something dire right now that we need to say, hey, CalPERS, we don't support these weapon manufacturers. So I, and I know our, like, our community doesn't either. And so that's what I'll say about that.
Well, I, yes, I, I agree with pretty much all of that. And I'll, I'll tell you, I think that my stance on this is that we have heard from a lot of people in the community, but we represent the employees and the people that work here. We, we negotiate their contracts. If we, if our, if the, if the city, if the employees that we're in, you know, that we're in charge of this money, the city of Arcata are coming to us, if their unions are coming to us asking for this, and I think that's a conversation we should have. But until the people who we represent up here, as far as their paychecks and their retirement comes to us, that's my hesitation. And so for me, those are the folks that I need to hear from because it's, it's their money, it's, it's their money.
And, and yeah, and I sent that letter, too, as an enrolled member of Calsters. And so, you know, you can do it as an individual, too.
So when I first came onto council, I had discussed or asked about divestment. And the argument was compelling, but I'm just wondering if maybe this is a conversation that we can maybe dig a little deeper in. I, I mean, I hear what Stacy is saying, absolutely. And I don't want to have these companies, I, I don't think we should be investing in any of this.
So I certainly, you know, I think that this is certainly a conversation we can have. And we, we have had it. I know that we talked about it when there was a movement and a push for, to divest from fossil fuels. And as Councilmember Schaefer said, you know, I do know that CalPERS is moving in that direction and that they, they do respond. I think one of the biggest challenges is that this is a fairly complex issue. And even, even weapons of mass destruction, which are horrible, we have to remember, our government also supports that. And much of the investment world in, in the world invests in the U.S. government, including most, most of our, as a, even as a municipality separate from CalPERS, although they also are very invested in, in the U.S. government. We essentially are required to invest in safe investments, which means that we invest most of our money in, in the, the U.S. federal government. So I'm happy to have that conversation. I'm happy to bring back and look at it in more detail and look at it from a full perspective. But it is not an easy, it's not an easy issue. And it is something that, you know, it does have lots of, of pieces and parts that we just would need to, to take, take a look at. But the council can, the council can individually, of course, and any employee, anybody out there can individually make that decision to support or not support or ask CalPERS to, to make different investment decisions. But, you know, the question is whether or not the council, what, where you would land on that. But it, if, if it's a conversation you want to have and go through, we can do that. And then you'll make the decision.
And also, I just want to mention that Eureka was, I don't know if they had the conversation or not, but that is a conversation they were planning on having or have had, PERS. Okay, so being that there may no, be anyone else, we're going to close the public hearing and adopt, are we going to adopt Resolution Number 245-53, adopting the fiscal year budget 2025, 2026 proposed budget? Anyone want to move for that? No?
No, I do, but I lost my page. Hold on.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 245-53, adopting the fiscal year 2025, 26 proposed budget.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to move myself since I have it right in front of me. Okay, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Tabitha.
The next item on our agenda is the introduction of ordinance Number 1580 and ordinance of the city of our council, of the city of Arcata, adding Section Number 3200 to designate fire hazard severity zone to Chapter One, Fire Prevention and Fire Protection, of Title Number Three, Public Safety of the Arcata Municipal Code. And so I'm going to ask for a staff report, please.
Great, well, good evening, council. Emily Sinkorn, Environmental Services Director. And this item is a public hearing to introduce an ordinance to designate fire hazard severity zones in Arcata. So CAL FIRE, our state agency for forestry and fire protection, is legislatively mandated to evaluate forest fire hazards, in particular, near communities. And they have, they have done this for a number of years. We've incorporated their mapping into our general plan. They have recently released a new updated hazard mapping for Arcata and for California. And that was released at the end of February. And what is different this year is that CAL FIRE now requires that local agencies in a local responsibility area or an LRA, like Arcata, we are served with fire suppression, fire response by Arcata Fire. In those local responsibility areas, we now need to adopt the map if we have a moderate or high fire severity. In the past, local jurisdictions were just required to adopt the map if they were in a very high fire hazard area. So CAL FIRE assesses as a hazard assessment really based on physical conditions, past fire on the landscape, and what they're modeling as fire behavior. This is different modeling than insurance companies use as a risk model. And so CAL FIRE's messaging is that adopting this map would not affect insurance rates because they're different models. In Arcata, the latest fire hazard severity zones that have been mapped, I'm thinking of, just to get a bigger picture, yellow is moderate fire hazard severity zone. And that includes much of eastern Arcata, east of 101, including the Cal Poly campus, including the community forest, many areas in Sunny Bray. In the city's Jacoby Creek Forest, there's one little sliver that is designated as a high fire severity area. That is a natural resource area. It's not private land. We're not regulating building within that, within that area. So when the, this map was released to the public, and I'll just leave it up on the screen and zoom in a little bit more. When this map was released to the public, staff posted on our website, and it's available on our Maps and GIS page. The Forest Management Committee also agendized this topic. We had a very productive and insightful discussion. The committee did not make any further recommendation. The CAL FIRE requirement is that local jurisdictions adopt this map. And we cannot lower fire hazard severity. A local jurisdiction can only raise it. So the Forest Management Committee did have some helpful conversation about ways that the city can continue to encourage property owners, new building, existing homeowners, business owners, of ways to do some low, lower-cost fire hardening, defensible space creation. And our UC Cooperative Extension has a lot of great tools. Our representative or our, our lead extension agent, Yana Valikovik, who is also on the Forest Management Committee, has done a lot of outreach about this. And that, that information is available. CAL FIRE also gives some very helpful low-cost retrofit options and, and kind of simple things of, you know, installing a non-combustible gutter cover on, on gutters to make sure to have 30 feet of defensible space cleared of dead plants, leaves away from your home. These are things that even though on the north and the more northern coast of Arcata, in the redwoods, we may not think of high fire return intervals, but we do know that fire is a, a natural piece on the, on the landscape. And so these are things that all of us can do and think about for, for preparation. So I just wanted to speak to that because if we had high severity mapped within Arcata, there would be different regulations that our building department and our municipal code in the building section would have to take on. And those are things at this moment with moderate fire hazard severity that we do not have to do. But these are things that we can encourage as tools to be best prepared. So I'm happy to answer any questions and suggest opening the public hearing, taking comment. So thank you.
Right now. So I'd like to open the public hearing on this topic. And so anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward. All right, do we have anyone on Zoom for this topic?
Yes, Naomi, please let me know if you didn't mean to raise your hand.
Because the topic is the prevent, fire prevention and fire protection.
Naomi, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry if this, this thing keeps raising the hand on its own. I, I haven't touched it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Oh, dear. Okay, well, thank you. Sorry about that. So then I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Thank you. So do we have a motion on the floor?
Could I just, any comments or?
Well, I asked, is there any comments?
Well, I, yeah, I, you were asking the public, but I'd like to, I just, my concern, which they were. I just, my concern, which they were appeased by our city manager, and thank you for reiterating, I just want the public to hear that this is not going to have an effect on their insurance, that the insurance rates are determined by the CAL FIRE FHSZ, right? So if it was going to go up, it would have went up. Us adopting it as a jurisdiction is not going to affect that.
Yes, that is my understanding. And also, just with talking with our building official and the information from CAL FIRE, these maps are released, official maps that exist at CAL FIRE and the state level. And so our taking an action to introduce this ordinance to adopt the map will not kind of change its use out in the state. And so it is my understanding that the models that are used to develop this map, which is, you know, official map at the state level, are different than the rates used by insurance companies.
And you mentioned that UC Cooperative, I'm assuming UC Davis Center for Cooperatives, their extension program has outreach on hardening and low-cost retrofit options. Are we doing anything to get that out into the community that folks can access that information if they need?
Yeah, that was part of the discussion at the Forest Management Committee. And it seems like we can add things on our website. Environmental Services can work with our Building Division for including that information for when people come to building permits. That can be part of just available tools and information.
Thank you.
And that area, of course, is an area where a lot of people have had trouble with their, getting their insurance anyway. And you don't have to actually be up there. You can be in other parts of Arcata and still not be able to get insurance or have your insurance canceled after paying for 25 years or something. And so a lot of people are really distressed about their requirements for insurance and their inability to actually secure it after paying for years. So fire in California is difficult. And I'm sure people will read this as being part of the hammer towards it, no matter if it is or not. Nevertheless, do we want to introduce this ordinance? And if so, would someone please take that on? Or would you like me to do it?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1580, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, adding section 3200 to designate fire hazard severity zones to Chapter One, Fire Prevention and Fire Protection, of Title Three, Public Safety of the Arcata Municipal Court. Waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Okay. All right, so any more discussion? All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We all agreed on that one. So now we're going to go to oral communications. And some of you have been really patient and you waited for this time. And we're going to be opening oral communications. And we will have three minutes of time. So if you would like to speak, would you please come up to the podium? Thank you for coming up to the podium. I know you may have gotten stuck in your chairs because we had to wait so blasted long, but thank you.
Hello, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to share here tonight. Palestine is the moral question of our time. Gabor Maté, a Jewish Holocaust survivor, originally from Hungary, he moved to Israel after the war and became a citizen there. He's also a renowned trauma specialist. He gave a speech in New York for the Society of Ethical Culture recently. In his speech, he said, "We have now seen the slaughter of Gaza, of children, of civilians. We have seen children being amputated without anesthetic and starved. The press always lied, but the lies have never been more egregious. The silence has never been so deafening as today." In his speech, Maté quotes another author, Amiral Akad's book, "One Day Everyone Will Have Been Against This." Akad wrote, "The moral component of history is the most necessary component. It's simply and simple, a question asked over and over again. When it mattered, who sided with justice and who sided with power? What makes moments like this so dangerous and so clarifying is that, one way or another, everyone is going to be forced to answer that question. When it mattered, who sided with justice and who sided with power? The CalPERS money is blood money. It's a sure-fire investment right now. That's for darn sure. We're getting ready to go to war with Iran. It's an unjustified war. It's unwarranted. It's illegal. It's against the UN Charter. But we're doing Israel's bidding because our politicians have been bought and paid for and because the military complex makes a ton of money. But is that a justification for staying with CalPERS? Because it's a sure-fire investment for the employees? Maté goes on to say, he said, "Asking the question as to where the truth lies regarding Gaza means that you are completely cut off from your heart and your gut. And without the heart and gut informing the mind, we are nothing more than genius-level reptiles, the same genius-level reptiles who are running the world right now. I support a sister city. Don't go fight for Israel. Don't go to Iran. Don't let your kids or your grandkids go. This is an unwarranted war. There's 90 million people there. We can never win that war. And it's going to bring financial ruin and maybe nuclear ruin to the whole world."
Thank you, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ella, and I live in Arcata for the last two decades. I am 92 years old, and I was alive during the Holocaust and history since then. I am strongly opposed to making Gaza a globally-known terrorist organization a sister city to my beautiful Arcata. Until the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition began its crusade against Israel, Arcata was a peaceful and lovely small town where everyone got along. And now the only Jewish temple in Arcata has an armed guard posted to go to services. This Redwood Peace and Justice has done nothing to promote peace, either in the Middle East or right here in Arcata. What have they done is promote and condone hatred against Jews. I saw the Redwood Peace and Justice sign in the farmer's market, and I quote, "Our taxes bomb kids in Gaza." What an ugly, ugly, one-sided sign. Did you forget that Gaza started a war and is still bombing Israel and Israeli kids? Don't Israeli kids matter? Where was the sign after October 7th for the slaughter of hundreds of unarmed kids at an innocent music festival? Was it okay for our taxes to pay for that because they were Jews? And yes, our taxes helped to pay for the worst massacre of the Jewish people since the Holocaust. Look it up. I am not a tech-savvy person, I'm old. But most of you, it's going to be easy to find it. Look it up. Look up PAY for Slay. That's P-A-Y for S-L-A-Y. The Palestinians have been receiving money for killing Jews for decades. And the murderers of October 7th plan to put in for their share. One of the murderers on October 7th stopped to call his father to say, "Dad, I killed 10 Jews, I killed 10 Jews." And his father congratulated him. Now you know why. The PA, Palestinian Authority, pays generous rewards to Palestinians and/or their families who carry out bombings, stabbings, and other attacks against innocents in Israel, including Americans. This has been labeled the PAY for Slay program. Because the U.S. has been providing aid to the Palestinian Authority, the U.S. has been indirectly paying for this terrorism from our taxes. All civilized countries condemn the PAY for Slay program now that they know about it. But the PA refuses to give it up. They just changed the name and hide it under another program. This is the culture of Gaza, who the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition wants a sister with so we can, quote, "exchange cultures"? I, for one, am happy with the culture we have now, which allows all religions to live in peace. I seriously question the agenda of the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition. And I do not approve of making it a sister city.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jody, and I live in Arcata. I'm here today to strongly object to adopting Gaza City as a sister city to Arcata. First, I'd like to address the hateful vitriolic tirades that some of the Zoom callers made at the last meeting. Do they think it's okay to call in and call Jews nasty names like genociders, apartheiders, and all the other tropes that are spread by Hamas? I think their antisemitism was very much on display in these chambers. But I'm here to discuss non-governmental organizations, also known as NGOs. They account for up to $1 billion being transferred to Gaza with no transparency of where the money is actually being used. NGOs are the lifeblood of terrorist funding. The Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition, who would like Arcata to commit material support to Gaza as a sister city, recently stated in this room that it collected $5,000 and transferred it as an NGO to their handler, Mr. Mohamed El Shakra, who is the International Cooperation and Development Liaison to the Palestinian Authority, the very same group that funds PAY for Slay. He helps to facilitate the transfer of money from foreign donors through NGOs to the Palestinian Authority, who use the funds however they wish. It is very easy to fool well-meaning people into thinking that they are just feeding children. I would suggest that the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition instead donate money to the Gaza Humanitarian Fund, who are providing free food aid to millions of families in Gaza directly by bypassing Hamas, who steals the aid from people. They've put out over 20 million meals in the last two and a half weeks. If Arcata wants to adopt a sister city, why not adopt, wait for the liberation of the Iranian people from the tyranny of the Islamic Revolutionary Guard, and adopt Tehran in the name of millions of women who were forced into Sharia law and raped and murdered if they dared to show their hair? We can thank Israel and the IDF for helping all of humanity by not allowing the IRGC to complete their nuclear weapons program. They've already stated that they will use those weapons against Israel and the United States. Arcata City Council, really, we really have no business getting involved in an ongoing war zone on the other side of the world.
Thank you very much for your comments. Would you, next speaker, please?
This is what democracy looks like. This is what democracy looks like. This is what democracy looks like. We have staff of the City of Arcata. We have elected officials on the dais. And we have, very importantly, the people. The people at the podium. I come here all the time. My name's Joanne McGary, so I can, you know, let people know who are maybe watching this for the first time. But I come here all the time because it is important to have all three of these positions in this room active and involved. And what happens is, people see me on the street, and they know, and they've seen me speak up here, and they ask me, "What's going on with the city?" Because they know I come here. And I say, "Come to a meeting. Call into a meeting. Get involved." And so I am trying to get more and more people involved in this position at the podium. Some of them say things I agree with. Some of them say things I don't agree with. Some of them surprise me in the variety of things that they say that I agree with some and not with other things they say. But it's important that we are heard by you and by you. The power of three, I've talked about it all the time, how strong the triangle is. It's the strongest shape in the world. I also want to go back to my THC CBD to remind you again, transparency, truth, and trust. Humility, honesty, honesty and humaneness. I can't even remember THC. Caring, compassion, and connectedness. The CBD is courage, bravery, and decisiveness. I remind you again, we are the hummingbird city. We do what we can to make a difference. I just finished this book that people have alluded to, "One Day Everyone Will Have Always Been Against This." "One day, everyone will always have been against this." It's a really important book. I encourage people to take a look. So finally, I participated last weekend in the protest. And I also went to the Golden Rule event, the Golden Rule Peace Boat, which we are so lucky to have here because it's historic peace boat to sail for a nuclear-free future. So I'm going to try and get as involved as possible with that. But I'm going to end this by saying, no kings and no queens.
Thank you very much. And do we have anyone else that would like to speak this evening in the audience? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Alice, please go ahead.
I support making Arcata and Gaza sister cities. There is currently a Holocaust being committed against Palestinians by Israel. Two million innocent people need our help. It is our moral duty to stand up against injustice as citizens of this nation and world. It is your duty as a city councillor to listen to your constituents and do what is best for the people. And after tonight's meeting, I have a feeling that is what you're going to do. Your city wants to be a sister city with Gaza. Those who are against it are those espousing untrue and horrific Zionist rhetoric. Hamas did not rape women on October 7th. That has been disproven. However, Israel does rape women, pregnant women in front of their husbands or other male members of their family forcing them to watch. Prison guards use sexual violence routinely against Palestinian hostages, even training dogs to rape innocent civilians unjustly imprisoned. Every accusation is an admission of guilt. Hamas does not use civilians as human shields. Israel does. It has recently been released that Israel has a Navy base located behind Rambam Medical Center, a civilian hospital in Haifa, with a three-story, 2,000-bed underground complex designed to operate during attacks. This is what human shields look like. I'd also like to look at what these Arcata Zionists are saying and decipher between a perceived threat and actual physical harm. I have heard people say they do not feel safe in this town as Jews, but I have to wonder, why is that? Have their tires been slashed? Have their cars been vandalized? Have they had cops called on them repeatedly? This is actual physical harm that has happened in Arcata to Palestinian and pro-Palestinian supporters. Pro-Zionist propaganda is harmful. It is racism against Palestinians. It has to be identified, and it must be stopped. There is currently an Assembly Bill, AB 715, that has been passed despite deep reservations from teachers, students, school boards, and community members. It is designed to dismantle pro-Palestinian advocacy and activism within the United States through the weaponization of false charges of antisemitism. Please make Gaza our sister city. Divest in CalPERS. Thank you, Sarah and Kim. I cannot express to you how much what you both have said tonight in the meeting about divestment has restored my faith in humanity. I know that it may take a lot of time to figure out a different path, but I must tell you, it is worth it. The majority of your community does not support war, violence, and the military-industrial complex. We don't need to make money off of murdering innocent civilians. There are other companies to support that align with our morals, values, and the creation of the future that will benefit us all. Please look into AB 17 and do whatever you possibly can to fight racism in this town and world. Divest from CalPERS. And thank you again for listening to your community.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Yes, Jeanne, please go ahead.
Yes, Jeanne, please go ahead.
Thank you.
I support the Gaza City sister city with Arcata. I support this council immediately advising CalPERS to divest from apartheid, occupation, and genocide. Legal terms, but 21 months of nonstop slaughter livestreamed. And save to Sarah! None of you have done that yet! I'm sorry. Council members, why do you support... Why do you grow support for and profit from mass murdering people every day? All the myriad ways in painful detail have been clearly documented by all the experts, what your investment is doing through CalPERS. It's forcibly annihilating Palestine. The bipartisan US partnership in this, to Tabitha's point with respect, violates the Leahy Law, the US laws too. US Leahy Law, the Foreign Assistance Act, Arms Export Control Act. And that's because Israel is in violation of the Nuclear Proliferation Treaty right now and has been for decades with impunity. So when we undermine our laws that protect us, we undermine the safety for all of us here, as well as the violation of international laws and the Geneva Convention on Genocide, which keeps us so far from barbarism. The World Court ruling makes boycott and divestment law of the land. It's the highest court above the US government. It ruled that Israel must dismantle its illegal settlements and end its criminal occupation on Palestinian land by July of 2025. Did you know that? Instead, and of course it is instead, with US backing only, is it possible that Israel is violently ethnically cleansing the occupied West Bank where our family is right now? And in Gaza, is mass shooting forcibly starved Palestinian children in the neck and their families as they stand in aid lines? Is using quadcopters to bomb them in the aid lines? Is using tanks to shell them in the aid lines? More than 70% of people in Gaza were Nakba survivors or the descendants of and under international law have the right to return to their stolen homes and land in Israel. That's why Israel is instead employing its final solution to exterminate them. Don't you see that? Just one of our beautiful friends there in Gaza was going to finish her degree. She had three credits left to become an engineer. She's now in a tent stripped of everything on a street, and her last video was her resorting to eating leaves. Eating leaves just because of the scale that you can't identify with. It's real. These are people just like you and I. The UN Special Rapporteur on Human Rights says, "Why isn't this being stopped in Gaza? Because it pays, and racism justifies it. Only highly coordinated and well-funded smear campaigns to condition you and I for anti-Palestinian..."
Thank you. So our next Zoom person?
Yes, Kate, please go ahead.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just short and sweet, I support Sister City with Gaza. I support everything that Alice has shared with us. I support everything that Jeanne has said. I want to thank Sarah and Kim for, you know, being alignment with humanity and not forefronting money or profit. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have our next person that's on Zoom?
Yes, Ryan, please go ahead.
Thank you.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, I just wanted to share my support for the sister city for Arcata and the divestment And yeah, and I wouldn't recommend you fall victim of any conspiracy theories like this PAY for Slay, which is just a simple thing that the PA does to help families that have been affected by Israel's violent occupation and apartheid system. Only sources that have criticized this is from the US and Israel, the two perpetrators that are trying to get rid of the Palestinians. So if you use some critical thinking there, they have a incentive to criticize this program. But aside for that, yeah, I say, please support the sister city and the divestment.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Mayor Stillman, I just wanted to check in because I know I started out saying one hand was raised, but the hands sometimes raise as the comments are made. Currently, I see one hand raised.
Okay.
So yeah, just asking for guidance there.
So you want to take the one hand that's raised, please.
Okay. Thank you. Ramira, please go ahead.
Hi. Good evening. I want to thank Sarah again for writing to CalPERS that they should divest from genocide and for speaking openly in front of all of you, and hopefully, all of you can follow suit and quickly. Because we are doing way too little, and it's been over 600 days of genocide, of the most horrific crimes I've ever seen. So, yeah. Just writing to support where y'all to keep pushing and investigating what those ties of the city of Arcata are to the investment and how there can be an alternative route for divestment. And I'm also in support of an Arcata sister city. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on Zoom, please. There are no more?
There are no more.
All right. Thank you then. That brings us back to the meeting. We're closing oral communications, and we'll go to council reports. And who would like to begin the council reports this evening? Are there any council reports this evening? Okay, Stacy, thank you.
I'll go. I kind of gave one earlier, that I did attend a homelessness and housing meeting. Also, helped council member Matthews do a little prep work for the Oyster Festival. Attended a gathering on the plaza with Centro de Pueblo. Our city manager was there, along with our mayor and council member Matthews. And that was in support of the immigrants in our community and people that are feeling threatened and how to work together to protect those folks. And so I do appreciate the work that Centro de Pueblo is continuing to do in our community. Also, listened to and participated in a presentation from Cal Yimby regarding housing. That's, yes, in my backyard in a meeting this morning. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Could I just do my report? Because I did everything that she did, except I ran the merchandising booth. I didn't help prep for Oyster Festival. So, all right. Next, please.
So, yeah, unfortunately, I had another commitment, so I was not able to attend the meeting that the rest of our council member did. But just to say that I'm always in support of our immigrant community, Centro de Pueblo, and as a CUNA coordinator, that is a given. My highlight of the day today was attending Arcata's first, might I say, premier dog park ribbon-cutting ceremony in Valley West. And it's just been a pleasure to see so many folks already using this dog park and so many dogs with huge smiles on their faces. So it was wonderful. I also attended the pace ribbon cutting, albeit late. Apologies for that. But I'm thrilled that we have this service now in our... available in the Valley West to serve all of Arcata seniors. And undoubtedly, this will change so many lives of our seniors. I also had the opportunity to be a participant in the incredible Oyster Festival, celebrating 35 years. And I am so looking forward to doing next year's celebration. And after all of her hard work, having council member Meredith Matthews on the other side of the celebration as a patron. So, yes. This Sunday, there will be a Valley West's first Music in the Park Food Truck Festival. It is a free event at Carlson Park. This is a family-friendly event with three live bands to include Ponies and Harmony, Lost Dogs, Mojo Rockers. Hope to see you there. And also the following weekend, on Saturday, June 28th, another free Carlson Park, Valley West hosting their third annual Tiangis, which is a Latinx-style flea market. And it will be featuring live bands to include The Latin Peppers and Banjo Makes Three. And I will be attending the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission next Monday evening, and will report back at our next upcoming council meeting. That's all I got.
All right. Well, I would like to thank all of my fellow councilwomen for helping out and participating in Oyster Fest. It was an incredible event. Not for nothing, it takes an incredible amount of work to plan an event of that scope, and it was a wonderful day. I would love to thank the city of Arcata, Parks and Recreation Department, Bright and Green Humboldt, that made this a zero-waste event. Every single volunteer, you know, if you love and enjoy all of these events that goes on in Arcata, volunteering is a great way to make it happen. I just, I really value you all for showing up and helping out. And, yeah, I'm gonna miss my job, but I'm going to be really happy to be able to support all the wonderful things that the Chamber of Commerce does. Also, on a sadder note, there's some really terrible legislation passed today against the transgender community, and I just want you to know that the city of Arcata unequivocally supports our transgender community. That's it.
See, I skipped right to Stacy because I said I had nothing to report, but I will add, I had a blast doing the oyster calling contest again, and...
You got on the news.
Yeah, I guess that's really the footage they wanted, was people screaming into a microphone. So that was always just a pinnacle of my Arcata experience. I love the Oyster Festival. It was my first outing as a little newborn baby, as I always tell people. So thank you to the Chamber team for making it such a great experience, and I think this really was one of the best ones yet, so.
So I just have one thing to add, and I don't think I said it last time, but we have the hydrogen bus ribbon cutting. And that was really quite exciting. And that's the first of 15 that are going to be coming. And at HCOG, I went to HCOG as a representative for Hummel Transit Authority as the vice chair, and they were going to... they're getting funding in order to be able to build the... help assist to build the hydrogen fuel station, because right now, they have a temporary one. And the bus serves... functions better than they expected. So they put it through a tough test, and it made it. So with that, we're going to go on to dates and future meetings and agenda items. And so we're going to cancel July 2nd, 2025 council meeting. B, we're going to confirm a joint study session with the Pining Commission on June 30th, 2025, at 5:30 here in the council chambers. C, we're going to confirm a joint study session with the Board of Directors of the Arcata Fire District for July 30th, 2025, at 3:30 in the council chambers. Are there any other meetings that I've missed?
No, but can I say one more thing that I forgot?
What?
I just want to congratulate the Humboldt Crabs. They're almost undefeated, but Senator Maguire is going to be here on June 28th to do a ribbon cutting to celebrate the new ballpark, which is bringing joy to thousands of people. Go Crabs, go!
And I think a lot of you maybe received invitations about Vero, and Vero has finished Eureka, and they're going to start in Arcata, and that's for internet. So that's coming up next Tuesday, I think, the 24th. We're adjourned.